I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. First up is an approved, an approval of the closed session agenda. Motion is in order, Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. I mean, you have quorum, so we can go. Yeah, just, we haven't.
The motion is five yes, one not present at vote, Mrs. Jesse, one not present at vote, Mrs. Wall, and one absent, Ms. Ralston.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to enter a closed session. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, promotion, and contracts of specific employees, and to receive advice on legal, related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 1 and 8. Two, to discuss with staff and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemption pertaining to a specific student under, as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 2 and 8. Three, to discuss with legal counsel and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving staff and students as provided by Section 2.2-3711A 1, 2, 7, and 8. Four, that the Prince William County School Board receive information and advice from legal counsel relating to the pandemic under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 8. Five, to consult with legal counsel and receive legal advice regarding PWCS non-discrimination policies and regulations under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 8. Six, to consult with the superintendent and legal counsel regarding the legal procedures relating to the conduct of board meetings under Virginia's Code Section 2.2-3711A 8. And seven, to receive information and to discuss with staff plans for the security of the Kelly Leadership Center and the safety of persons using that facility under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 19.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session approximately one hour. Thank you. from closed session. We must move on to the closed session certification. Ms. Zargarpur, a motion is in order.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of October 20, 2021, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session, action item, a motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, promotion, and contracts of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jesse.
I have a second.
Ms. Jesse seconds a motion. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to 9.02, approval of request for religious exemption from compulsory school attendance. Ms. Zargarpur, a motion is in order.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the request for religious exemption from compulsory school attendance in case number RE 21-20.
A second, please.
Second.
Ms. Jen Wall seconds a motion. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, excellent. So at this point, I'll call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Donia, if you'd like to lead us in the pledge.
You don't have to do it in the mic, just stay loud.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you. Next, moving on to 12.01, an approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Ms. Williams seconds a motion. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
Moving on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who have signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. A citizen's comment period for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour with the first half hour reserved for comments on agenda items only, second half hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Prince William County schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak on the agenda item they have identified, or they will be asked to step down. We have five speakers on agenda items and 10 on non-agenda items this evening. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. When you are called to the podium, please state your name and address. For the record, I will call the first, first, so the five speakers who are, or four, five who will be speaking can come to the front if they'd like to grab a seat close to the mic. Gina Ciarcia, Oveta Scott, Jennifer Rokoski, Heather McCann, and Jeff Fuller. So Ms. Ciarcia. Gina Ciarcia. Okay, Oveta Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Mr. Chairman, Dr. McDade, my name is Oveta Scott, and my address is on file with the clerk. Tonight, I know that Madam Superintendent is going to speak on the state of Prince William County schools. However, I would like to supplement that with the frontline addition of the state of our schools. First, bus drivers continue to have multiple runs and must combine routes, which leads to students packed on the bus. The effects, students are late to school daily, late returns, and nowhere, no way to contact trace. With the shortage of custodians, it has limited the ability to properly clean buildings to hinder the spread of COVID-19 if it's present. Now let's shift to the classroom. Again, the shortage of subs has led to teachers losing their planning time to cover classes. Libraries are closed, ESOL services are limited, as well as bed accommodations, because staff are pulled to assist in covering classes. Whether teachers are elementary, middle, or high school, how are they properly to stay on track with grading, prepping lessons, and maintaining canvas pages? Another concern are teachers who agree to instruct an additional class to address the recovery of learning for low-performing students. There are some who have not started receiving payment for the service. Also, there's a lack of transparency when it comes to notifying teachers of our students who must quarantine or whether they have contracted COVID-19. Lastly, let's bring into light site-based management. As you know, every school operates on a different agenda. Staff must be mindful of our students' mental health, but are we not human beings too? With all the challenges we face at this moment, some principles are very strict on having CLT meetings, grade-level meetings, department meetings, faculty meetings, and special event planning meetings. With ongoing meetings, duties, addressing academic concerns, and TikTok challenges, how do we breed? This school year, teachers were given five personal days to use, but there is a school admin who stated that any day taken before or after a holiday will be leave without pay. How is this appropriate? There is no going back to normal, but how can we work together to address these important concerns right now before there is a greater shortage of staff members? Thank you.
Jennifer Rokoski.
Sorry. Good evening, school board members and Dr. McDade. My name is Jennifer Rokoski, and I reside in the Okaquan District. I looked over the state of the school's report presentation, and there's an item I wanted to really press on. Under next step, there is an item to support social, emotional, and mental well-being of staff and, staff needs of, being of needs of staff and students, focusing on the staff portion. There are several staff members, they're stressed out, they're looking for different career options. One teacher shared with me that she and others have not received extra pay for teaching concurrently or taking on a sixth class that is virtual. Teachers are not getting their planning time because they are covering other classes, or it's being taken up by extra meetings. Teachers are working past contract time, either coming in early or staying later because of meetings, duties, needing to stay with students until the buses arrive. If they are a special education teacher, their caseloads are very high, same for ELL teachers. Some of our teaching assistants are working like or as a teacher, but they are not paid a teacher's salary. A few comments to share from some friends of mine. Planning time for teachers has not, has to be honored. We're spending too much of our own time working. Morale is low, and many have expressed an interest in leaving the profession due to low pay, heavy workloads, and unrealistic expectations. Expectations are unattainable and unrealistic. There's too much to do and not enough time. Teachers are burned out, and more task expectations continue to increase. More ELL dedicated classrooms are needed. Mainstreaming to save money is disservice to students. I have a student in my government class who doesn't speak English. Why? Because it's not an SOL class. I feel like I fail her every day. Because this is the first normal year back, students are relearning what it means to be a student. Teachers are having to reteach proper behaviors needed in class. Staff bring up concerns to administrators, but some staff feel ignored. My friends who are still in the classroom, again, they're exhausted, they're mentally struggling, and are seriously considering other careers. Please listen to your staff. I know there are shortages, but teachers are covering each other's classes because of lack of staff and subs. Staff are coming in earlier and staying later because of lack of bus drivers. Please talk to site-based school administrators to let their teachers know, and staff to have their planning time and unencumbered lunches. Please find ways to possibly compensate staff who are coming in earlier or staying later for covering buses or covering each other's classes. Perhaps look at doing half-days or having an asynchronous day so staff can plan and catch up. Thank you for your time.
Heather McCann.
Hello, my name is Heather McCann. My address is on file. It is no secret to anyone what was just released in Loudoun County Public Schools with respect to a young man that entered the girls' bathroom wearing a skirt and sexually violating a young girl. What is also not a secret is how the school chose to sweep that crime under the rug and simply transfer that student to another school where he again violated another girl. Our schools have gone to great lengths protecting our LGBTQ community with regard to using the school facilities such as bathrooms and locker rooms, while also ignoring the concerns of other students that maybe don't feel safe sharing bathrooms and locker rooms with other children of the opposite sex. Prince William County Schools has said in Policy 738-5 that all students have access to facilities like bathrooms and locker rooms that correspond to their gender identity, while also stating that alternatives shall be made for those students who request additional privacy. The VDOE also published a Q and A under transgender students in school bathrooms, informing every one of the new policies regarding the school's promises to keep our children safe and treated equally. The policy states in part that, "Every child needs to be safe in the bathroom. Too many students avoid using bathrooms out of fear that another student will mistreat or hurt them physically or emotionally. The consequences can be severe, impacting a child's health, well-being, and their ability to concentrate on learning." By creating a positive climate, supervising it appropriately, and making behavioral expectations clear, schools can reduce all students' fears about a safety in these spaces. For, for a variety of reasons, however, there will remain a percentage of students who would prefer a more private space than many, than many school bathrooms allow, whether for cultural or religious reasons, a particular health issue, concerns related to gender, or simple modesty. Schools should work actively to identify private options that are available to any student who requests them. Regardless of the student's underlying reason for using it, such options should be free of stigma, and a student who uses a private space should be, not be ridiculed or singled out by staff or students. The parents are now requesting that the school board make good on this promise, that children should be allowed to use private bathrooms where they can feel safe and enjoy privacy by publishing a well-marked floor plan of each school, on each floor of each school, identifying the location of these private bathrooms for their use. The school needs to inform the parents how they will escort young elementary school children to these private facilities, and how it will be non-stigmatizing and will minimize the loss of instruction time. As promised in the policy, we look forward to your compliance. Thank you.
Jeff Fuller.
Hello, board. Dr. McDade, I'm Jeff Fuller. I'm from Gainesville District. I'm wearing these glasses and masks and so forth because I want to keep the FBI off my back. But I'm 75, so I really don't give a damn. I'd like to give you some kudos. Dr. McDade, your staff has responded to my email request for information quickly. They haven't answered any of my questions, but at least they acknowledge my existence, for which I'm grateful. I'm glad that we're going to have a little public discourse on the topic of what I think is a bit of a contentious topic, that is, the transgender policy coming out of Virginia Department of Education. Now, we still haven't gotten an answer to the question is, why is this room restricted to 48 seats for the public? That's not, would someone please answer that publicly for us at some point? The other problem I have is you have a, some kind of a resistance to transparency and dialogue. Now, I've been asking for some time now for a town hall meeting to discuss the equity policy or statement, and I also asked that you consider doing that for the transgender policy. They're both contentious issues. Your policy on dialogue with the public allows for it, and I respectfully ask you to do that. And, Dr. McDade, before you came here, the deputy, and I believe it might have been Ms. Williams, I can't remember who, on the board said, "Yes, we need to have a dialogue about this." I don't mean one-way street where we talk to you and we don't get an answer. So the, I guess we've got something like six gender identities in the transgender policy. I don't want to imply here that I have anything but great hope that every child of every identity feels safe in school. And by the way, for you teachers, I respect so much what you do. I can't imagine being a teacher, especially with the layers of bureaucracy and instructions and guidance and meetings that you must have to do. But teach your kids, teach our kids you must, and we're grateful for it, I am at least. You got this thing in the policy that says, "Schools shall now allow students to use a name and gender pronoun that reflect their gender identity without any substantiate substantive evidence, and that school staff shall, at the request of a student or a parent, when using a name or pronoun to address a student, use the name and pronoun that correspond to their gender identity."
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you for listening.
I'll make one more call. Gina Ciarcia, I don't know if you heard mine, okay.
Well, it seems the recent events in Loudoun County happened to be the topic of this meeting. So oftentimes, ideas that are developed in high academia and toyed with by scholars in their ivory towers do not stay there. Those ideas trickle down to us ordinary, everyday people, and those ideas always carry with them consequences, many consequences that were unforeseen or unintended. It is dangerous when we adopt ideas that disregard self-evident facts. And I want to begin by saying, students who are suffering with gender dysphoria deserve love, respect, understanding, and care by their teachers, administrators, parents, and fellow students. However, we must acknowledge that they are dealing with a mental health issue, since the ideas in their minds are not in line with the realities of their body. We have unfortunately adopted language that is unhelpful when it comes to dealing with these students. We have adopted the idea that gender is assigned, but in fact, gender is not assigned at birth by a doctor. It is reported. In fact, halfway through a pregnancy, an ultrasound technician can clearly and definitively report the gender of a baby. When we use language such as assigned, we deny reality, and we are in open rebellion to the created order. Gender is firmly rooted in sex. Despite whatever surgeries one may have, every single cell is programmed, for instance, in my case, as female. No matter what I do, I cannot change that. America is a practical and a pragmatic people, and our success is rooted in large part to a correct assessment of reality and human nature. And I urge you to consider this when you are trying to develop policy for students who are dealing with gender transphoria, dysphoria. We need to make sure that our policy is rooted in a correct assessment of reality and human nature, for that indeed shows the greatest love and respect toward these students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the non-agenda items. Mr. Richard Jesse. After him will be Jessica Newton, Kristen Gladhill, and Kimberly Stewart.
My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. I want to talk about two items tonight. One is a simple one, and a suggestion to the board. I have sat through a lot of boundary meetings, and they are very difficult and challenging for everyone. What I'd like the board to consider is not waiting until a year before the school opened or two years, but as soon as you find out that this school is going to be built in that area, have a boundary meeting. Give the parents time to understand what's going to happen. People buy homes, rent homes based on schools. And when you have a movement in an area, the more time you can give parents to adjust to that movement, the better it is. So my suggestion is as soon as it's legally fixed and the school is ready to go and start building, that's the time to have a boundary meeting. The second item I'd like to discuss is the security, and if you have a rule, enforce the rule. If you're not going to enforce the rule, why have it? The policy statement is full of, may do this and may do that, and if you would, you know, if you don't do this, this is possibly what's going to happen. I would suggest that we have a stronger wording, and that when people are disobeying the rules and refuse to do what they are asked to do, then action be taken. I do believe in de-escalation of things. However, at some point, it needs to be enforced. And one of the suggestions I wrote in the email to everyone on the board and to the superintendent was that perhaps you should meet with the Commonwealth attorney and find out what you can do when people are disruptive. Can you file a charge of disorderly conduct? Or at least, at the school division, you can say this person is no longer allowed to be on the school property. Because you do that for students all the time, you do that for parents, and I think you should do it for people who are disrupted. It is nice to have a meeting like the last two, where we can disagree with you or agree with you, and it's done in a civil manner. But three or four meetings ago, when it was not civil, it was something that I think we should take into account. Thank you.
Jessica Newton.
Hello, I'm Jessica Newton from Gainesville, Virginia. I want to address the oft-repeated response that PWCS does not teach CRT. That is disingenuous, as no one has claimed the theory is taught in K through 12. Many have been here to protest against the fact that the ideology of CRT will be implemented through culturally responsive teacher training, which, as you know, is now state law. We can't go before the General Assembly or the Virginia Department of Education, so we have to come before you. We object that this board embraced the tenets of CRT with the equity statement. Some of you still don't understand they are one in the same. We object that apparently no one on the superintendent's Equity Council nor this board did any due diligence in respect to investigating cited sources. Otherwise, they and you would know the direct connection of equity and culturally responsive pedagogy training to critical race theory, or are you being disingenuous? When still with Prince William County, Maria Burgos created an instructional slide for the PWCS Office of Professional Learning called Continuum of School Equity. One of her own cited sources for this slide is critical race theory today. Did you know this? If not, why not? If so, why the repeated disingenuous denials that what you are embracing is not CRT? Come clean, and let's have a town hall. We know that the National Education Association with a local chapter representing PWCS teachers and PWEA voted in June to expand the implementation of CRT in K through 12 in all 50 states. If they can be honest, why can't you? Do you support the NEAs vote on CRT? Do you believe that disparate outcomes in education are due solely to racism? Do you believe all Americans are either oppressed or oppressors? Do you believe that teachers should have to quote, "Mediate power imbalances in the classroom based on race, gender, sexual identity, culture, and class," and then be evaluated on that to retain their license? Did you know that is required in Virginia's new law for culturally- Did you know that is required in Virginia's new law for culturally responsive pedagogy? Mr. Wilks, in May, you stated you do not support critical race theory. I don't doubt your sincerity, so it is proof this board does not understand that equity is inextricable from critical race theory and intersectionality and critical theory. The sources cited by the Equity Committee and VDOE are career critical race theorists, Bettina Love, Gloria Latson Billings, and Ibram Kendi, to name a few. Did anyone on this committee or this board bother to research them? These sources do not hide their motives, agenda, or philosophy. All are openly anti-capitalist. Do you support capitalism? Or do you agree with your sources that it is a systemically racist system that needs to be dismantled? These same sources cited by the Equity Committee are also advocate for abolishing the police in prisons. Did you know that? And do you agree? From the creator of culturally responsive pedagogy and PWCS VDOE equity source Gloria Latson Billings on CRT in education, Marxist and neo-Marxist formulations about class continue to merit consideration as theoretical models for understanding social inequity. From Bettina Love, PWCS VDOE cited source and inventor of abolitionist teaching, quote, "Our schools and our teaching practices do not need to be reimagined. They need to be torn down and replaced with our freedom dreams rooted in participatory democracy and intersectionality justice."
Thank you, Ms. Newton.
And this, thank you.
Kristin Gladhill.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristin Gladhill. My address is on file. So I'm a local mom of two, and I'm deeply concerned about what's happening in our schools. I honestly never thought I'd actually have to come to one of these and say anything. So what's happening, I feel, is very wrong, and me and many others do not agree with the culture that is being shoved down our throats. Us parents have lost faith in the school board's ability to make basic, morally correct choices. Tonight, you may be voting on a policy that will essentially remove girls' rights, privacy, and safety. This policy, and I'm summarizing, will allow for housing of people based on whichever sex they choose to claim. Our daughters who are aware on sports tournaments might be subject to spending the night in a hotel room with someone of the opposite chromosome. I grew up playing soccer my whole life, and things that I'm hearing right now are honestly just personally terrifying. Bad things happen all the time in schools. We're not naive to that, and we know this, but the policies being put in place are threatening the safety and rights of young girls. It would be naive of us all to think that the recent rap offenses from Loudoun County would not continue to happen or possibly increase. Beyond that, what's even more concerning is how those in charge, the adults of these situations, how they were handled after the fact. Did we see school resource officers, the school administrator, the school board, or superintendent proactively jump to do the right thing, protect this little girl in any of the instances after it happened? Shockingly, no. Instead, the entire country just witnessed more lies, more deceit, more cover-ups, and crimes against humanity. With the policies that you continue to be in support of and your lack of belief in public transparency, we just do not trust you anymore, and we won't stop advocating for our children. Two questions I want to leave you with. What are you doing to protect our students from everything that I just shared? And last, a thought and then a question. As a society, we have to stand for something, or we're going to quickly fall for the next fad of relative truth that allows a Trojan horse into our moral compass. Loudoun County and many others in our great nation are struggling to find their moral compass that clearly delineates right from wrong. And right from wrong is not my reality, it's not yours, and it's not the students', but it's an absolute truth given to us by God. Like the challenge Loudoun County School Board, are you also going to be willing to manipulate the school's moral compass to protect a wave of culture that seems to be without one? Thank you.
Kimberly Stewart.
My name is Kimberly Stewart. My address is on file with the clerk. I'm a mother of two boys in Prince William County and a veteran educator of 16 years. I am here to tell you today that what you are doing to our children and the harm you are causing them by preventing the parental choice when it comes to their medical health is criminal. As an educator in and out of the classroom for the past two years, I have personally seen the emotional, physical, mental, and educational harm that universal masking, social distancing, plastic barriers, and other intrusive measures have done to our children. You are not following the science, you are following the political leanings and blatant disregard for the real health and well-being of our children. You are not listening to parents, and you are not involving them in the decision-making for their own children's health. Please return the parental choice of health of every child in this district immediately to the parents and their professional medical care doctors. Schools are not and have never been meant to be places of medical care, medical treatment, and medical tyranny. You are not my child's doctor or anyone else's. Stop forcing medical mandates on our children. I'm also here to demand an immediate public statement by this board condemning the recent statements of the gubernatorial candidate Terry McAuliffe regarding parent involvement in schools. This board must recognize and appreciate the critical role that parents play in the educational system of PWCS. As an educator, I could only wish for more parental involvement, increased parent presence in our schools, and encouragement of our communities to be a critical and vital part of our system's success. Parents are the ones who volunteer to make up for shortcomings in classroom assistance. They donate money and time to the schools through PTO, PTSA, and PTA organizations to support the financial shortcomings of our systems. They run many of our clubs and activities. They provide student transportation when we don't have enough bus drivers. They sub in our buildings. They coach our sports teams. They own local businesses that support our schools and our children, and they absolutely should have a say in our educational system and what is being taught to our children. This school board should be finding more ways to involve parents, hear parents, and work with parents, not limiting, silencing, and shaming their voices and involvement. Involved, caring, passionate, engaged parents are not domestic terrorists, they are parents who care. When parents are involved in schools, our schools are more successful, our students are more successful, and our teachers and staff have the support that they need. I want to commend Mr. Scott Baldwin publicly of Haymarket Elementary School for knowing and understanding this and always finding ways to encourage and involve the community and the parents. Maybe this board should stop playing politics and start listening to the parents that support this system and its success. I am a mother and an educator, and I will continue to fight for what I know is best for kids.
Martha Cutzinger. And after Martha will be Melanie Duchato, Dale Marie Walton, Michelle Baldwin.
All right. Good evening. I'm Martha Cutzinger. I'm from Haymarket.
Hold on one sec. Can I get the timer up? I don't need to see the screen, the, we don't need to see the squares on the screens here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Cutzinger.
That's okay. Thank you. I'm Martha Cutzinger from Haymarket. I'm reading excerpts from an article called "We Got Here Because of Cowardice." A lot of people want to convince you that you need a PhD or law degree to understand the CRT intersectionality movement. You do not. You simply need to believe your own eyes and ears. In this ideology, speech is violence, and education is not about teaching people how to think, it's about reeducating them in what to think. In this ideology, the past cannot be understood in its own terms, but must be judged through the morals and mores of the present. In this ideology, the equality of opportunity is replaced with equality of outcome as a measure of fairness. Thus, the argument to get rid of the admissions test for public schools like Thomas Jefferson in Virginia. In this ideology, you are guilty of the sins of your fathers. That is why third graders in California were asked to rate themselves in terms of their power and privilege in third grade. In this system, we are placed neatly on the spectrum of privilege to oppressed in different categories such as race, gender, sexual orientation, and class. Most important in this revolution, skeptics of this radical ideology are tarnished as bigots. The woke revolution has been exceptionally effective, and our schools are increasingly the recruiting grounds for this ideological army. At a mandatory training earlier this year in San Diego, VDOE source Bettina Love accused white teachers of spirit murdering black and brown children and urged them to undergo anti-racist therapy for white educators. Did you know that your source had those opinions? A recent educational program for sixth and eighth grader teachers called "A Pathway to Equitable Math Instruction" informs teachers that white supremacy shows up in math instruction. How did we get here? The word is cowardice, the refusal of the adults in the room to tell the truth. If cowardice is the thing that is allowed for all of this, the force that stops this cultural revolution is courage, and courage often comes from people you would not expect. Courage looks like Paul Rossi, the math teacher at Grace Church High School in New York who raised questions about this ideology at a mandatory whites-only Zoom meeting. Unwilling to disavow his beliefs, Rossi blew the whistle. That takes courage. Courage is G. Van Fleet, a Virginia mom who endured Mao's Cultural Revolution as a child and spoke up to the Loudoun County School Board. "You are training our children to loathe our country and our history," she said in front of the school board. Growing up in Mao's China, all of this feels very familiar. The only difference is that they use class instead of race. George Orwell said that "The further a society drifts from the truth, the more it will hate those that speak it." So let's start with a little courage. When you're told that the valued traits such as industriousness and punctuality are the legacy of white supremacy, don't hesitate to reject it. And when you're told that America was founded to perpetuate slavery, don't take part in rewriting the country's history. America is imperfect, but America and we Americans are far from irredeemable. And when you are told that you are implementing critical race theory through culturally responsive pedagogy, come clean, tell the truth. Let's have a town hall and talk about it. You are implementing critical race theory, and some of you on this board know it. Thank you.
Melanie Duchato.
Melanie Duchato, Coles District. Excerpts from an article called "Culturally Relevant Pedagogy Limits Minority Students." It should be great news. Graduation rates for Minnesota's Black and Hispanic students, which have long lagged the rate for white students, are on the rise. But how much do these new graduates actually know? What skills have they mastered? In other words, what is their high school diploma really worth? MinPost.com recently profiled a new Spanish Heritage Program at Roosevelt High School that Principal Michael Bradley credits with helping to boost the school's Hispanic graduation rate. The program features culturally relevant pedagogy and focuses on developing Hispanic students' sense of cultural identity. The article explained that students see themselves in the curriculum, find their voice, and become their own advocates, but it says little about whether they acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to become well-informed, productive citizens. Though the graduation rate increased to almost 75%, only 6% of the school's Hispanic students were proficient in reading, and only 10% in math. Culturally relevant pedagogy is the brainchild of Gloria Latson Billings. She coined the term in 1992 and says that it describes a pedagogy, sorry, a pedagogy of opposition. A primary goal of her approach, she says, is that students must develop a critical consciousness through which they challenge the status quo of their current social order. Latson Billings singles out Paulo Freire as an author whose vision of education undergirds culturally relevant pedagogy. Freire was a Brazilian Marxist and educator. In his 1968 book, Pedagogy of the Oppressed, he taught that all societies are divided between oppressors and oppressed, and called for the revolutionary overthrow of capitalist hegemony. Hegemony, sorry. Freire dismissed academic learning as mere knowledge that oppressors used to rationalize inequality in capitalist societies. How does a pedagogical approach grounded in such a perspective prepare American students for success? Today, many educators assume that Black and Hispanic students cannot succeed in school unless they see themselves in the curriculum. Culturally relevant pedagogy may be well-intentioned, but its multicultural vision prevents minority students from utilizing the existing culture of the larger society around them for their own advancement, in the words of Thomas Sowell. Multiculturalism, like the caste system, he points out, tends to freeze people where the accident of birth has placed them. I wish the students of Roosevelt's Spanish Heritage Program well, but I can't help wishing they had the opportunity to attend a school that, instead of locking them in the box of culturally relevant pedagogy, equipped them with the knowledge and skills they need to seize the opportunities that wait at their doorstep in America.
Thank you. Dale Marie Walton.
My name is Dale Marie Walton, and from Haymarket, Virginia, and I am privileged to be on the Board of Patents Project. We are a small, private organization and taking actions to assist all Prince William County students to increase their psychological well-being. I am thankful that our school board has focused on the emotional well-being of all students for this 2021-22 school year. One outstanding resource that schools have to support is mental health, is having a wellness room. Our young teens can go into the wellness room, accompanied, of course, by a counselor, to take a chill break. There, they can release their stresses, their anxieties, by using sensory materials and gross motor items. Some examples of these are like mini trampolines, breathing balls, calming music, and weighted blankets. The goal of these rooms is to have the student return to their classroom calm and ready to learn. Wellness rooms teach all kids how to self-regulate and promote resiliency. We all know that these skills are essential for us to function successfully in our adult lives. To support this endeavor for the 2022-2023 school year, Patents Project is offering $6,000 grants to middle schools in Prince William County for supplies to start a wellness room for their schools. Here, the focus is on helping all young adolescents contribute to increase their mental resiliency. In 2021-22 school year, this school year, Unity Braxton Middle School, Ripon Middle School, Woodbridge Middle School, Potomac Shores Middle School, and Fredlin Middle Schools each were awarded $5,000 from us to set up their wellness rooms. Also, these schools will receive an additional $2,000 next school year to replace materials and/or purchase additional supplies for these rooms. Our goal is to have a wellness room in all Prince William County's middle schools. Please go to patentsproject.org/programs to find further information on our wellness rooms. In closing, I wish to emphasize that each child's emotional well-being is just as important as learning. Patents Project is focused on all kids possessing good mental health wellness and teaching young people to be kind to everyone. For this is what our beloved Peyton Rose Fries would do. Thank you for your time.
Michelle Baldwin. And then after her will be Brent Fries and Jason Van Valen. Michelle Baldwin.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Baldwin. My address is on file. I am a kindergarten teacher in this amazing division. I love my students, I love my school, and my job. But kindergarten is a heavy lift. I would like to explain some of the difficulties of large kindergarten classes and explain the testing demands placed on these young students as they begin school. Our kindergarten class max is 29 students. These young students need help with so many things as they start school. Behaviors, letters, numbers, learning to write, learning to read, oral language, regulating emotions, using tools like scissors and computers, right? These new students need so much help to learn how to be at school. Kindergarten is foundational. Large class sizes make teaching these skills very difficult because they all need so much help. I have a small table in the back of my classroom. It's supposed to be a small group teaching table, but it's really just been a testing table for the entire first quarter. Did you know that almost all kindergarten testing is given one-on-one? I call my students back one at a time to ask them testing questions. I can't pass out a test for everybody to complete simultaneously. Large class sizes make one-on-one testing extremely time-consuming. First-quarter testing for kindergartners included 184 questions for each of my up to 29 students. We have lost almost two months of small group teaching time to testing. Should a five-year-old be asked 184 questions when they just start school? I've been testing at every free moment for eight weeks, and I'm still not finished for report cards. I know I'm a professional educator, and I know I have to give assessments, but 184 questions to students who are just entering school? When I'm back testing, students try to do centers, but they need me on the floor guiding them and helping them. Here's a true story for you from my kindergarten classroom. I have a fun literacy center where kids dig through a large container of rice to find magnet letters, and then they match them on their alphabet chart. So I'm back in the back table testing, and I look up to see a child throwing the rice like confetti. They're five years old, right? They need help and guidance to learn to be successful at school. They don't come to us independent and successful. Pulling classroom teachers to sit at back tables to test for a solid two months is detrimental to students' learning, the routines of the classroom. In closing, I encourage the board respectfully to lower the max class size for kindergarten and decrease testing demands on these very young students. Can we find some middle ground between the preschool max size of 20? Can we find some middle ground between the preschool max size of 20 and the first-grade max size of 30? I know Title I is maxed at 22. I would love to see the district cap all kindergarten classrooms at 22 students. Lower class sizes and less testing will lead to stronger students for years to come. Thank you.
Brent Fries.
Good evening. My name is Brent Fries, and my address is on file with clerk. I wanted to thank the entire board and Dr. McCade for the opportunity to speak. It's unfortunately been a few years since I've been able to speak to you all, but for those last few years, we've been kind of busy. In 2016, I lost my daughter Peyton Rose Fries to suicide. She was being bullied severely at school. She was a senior at Battlefield High School, and she couldn't take it anymore. After my loss, I came to this board and I asked, "How can we do better for our children? How can we work together to find new ways? How can we prevent another father, another parent, another community, another school from having to do what I'm doing right now, which is stand here and know that last week she'd have been 23 years old?" I'll never forget to celebrate that with her. Over the last five and a half years, the charity that Patents Family and Community started Patents Project has worked tirelessly on that objective. We've partnered with Spark. We've given $35,000 in scholarships to date to those who have been bullied or have made their community better and eliminated bullying. We've created Patents Peers, which is a peer group that allows our children to become more self-aware, more self-worth, and have more self-value. I've had the opportunity to speak to thousands of children and parents over the last five and a half years on bullying and cyberbullying and how the impacts, all of us, and the very negative mental health and wellness outcomes of ignoring this problem. A statistic for you, according to StopBullying.gov, 28% of the students between the ages of sixth grade and 12th grade report being bullied or cyberbullied, and the number has increased 3% since my daughter took her life. That's insane, that it's gone up, not gotten better. Thank you to Dale Marie in sharing the fact that we've provided $25,000 in grant money to Prince William County Schools for the wellness rooms. I wanted to share that progress with you because I wanted also say that Patents Project is dedicated to every student, every child, every administrator, every teacher. We are here to help. We will always help. We will be here until I cannot breathe anymore. We will continue to fight for our youth. I ask this board, I ask everyone involved, please find a moment of kindness in the anarchy. Find a moment of calm in the darkness. We can do this together as long as we listen to each other. Thank you so much, and I look forward to the partnership carrying forward.
Jason Van Valen.
Good evening. My name is Jason Van Valen. I'm the parent of a PWCS student. I have a daughter, goes to school here. So I got four main things that I wanted to bring up, provide recommendations, and see if you guys could think about it, maybe interact some of it. First off, I'd like to see is get rid of the mask mandates. I don't like them. Secondly, I know it's coming down the pipe, but I don't want to see a vaccine mandate for the children or the mRNA therapy. I don't want to see a mandate for that here in PWCS. Also, I know other people have talked about it tonight, but get rid of CRT in schools, regardless of what you call it. And lastly, I kind of think this would be an interesting proposal. I'd like to see cameras in classrooms. So just to elaborate a little bit on each of those items, mask mandates, I think it's a political theater tool, to be honest, more than anything else. It dehumanizes our children. My daughter was a very, very good student, and she is suffering because of the mask mandate. It makes it hard for her to interact with the other kids, and she's suffering. I think a lot of other students are suffering, and I think when we look back with history, we'll probably realize that it was all a big mistake. If you look at some other countries in the world, Sweden, Norway, Denmark, they've gotten rid of the mask mandates. Some of them got rid of them early on, and they're not having any problems. Kids don't really get the disease. They don't really spread it. Early, when this first thing kicked off, the COVID pandemic, we had 15 days to stop the insanity. I'd like to see 15 days-- excuse me-- we had 15 days to slow the spread, and I'd like to see 15 days to stop the insanity. Could we do that here in PWCS? Hire some statisticians and, you know, do a case study? See if it makes any difference at all? I'd like to see if that's something we could try. As far as the vaccine mandates, I believe a total of 442 children between the ages of five and 18, according to the CDC today, have died because of COVID, and I'm suspect of their data. But having said that, that's like 225 a year, way less than drowning, way, way less than automobile accidents. The risk-return that you guys are using to make your judgment seems way off. I mean, automobile accidents is massive, 10 times the kids in COVID. Should we make the speed limit five miles an hour? I mean, that would save lives. Are y'all science deniers? Doesn't that sound a little ludicrous? So I just think that the vaccine mandate should be a parent's decision. Moving on, CRT. Bunch of people have already summed this up earlier tonight, but I'm of the mind that the content of your character determines more than the color of your skin, and I'll leave it as simply as that. Finally, the cameras in the classrooms, I think that would help you as well as the parents so that we could go back and look at maybe what happened in a situation, and also would provide some transparency so that we could make sure that you guys and the teachers are doing your jobs effectively. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to-- and that concludes Citizen Common Time. Thank you all. Next, we'll go on to the student representative. Joining us this evening is Danya Sharifi, who attends Gainesville High School. Ms. Danya Sharifi, please take it away. The mic on.
Oh, okay, thank you. Good evening to the school board and to the Prince William County community. My name is Danya Sharifi, and I'm one of the student representatives for Prince William County during this school year. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you guys about my goals and intentions for this year as a student rep. One of my personal goals for this year is to address the recent change to the dress code. Although the new code of behavior includes changes to the dress code, there is still room for improvement. The new code of behavior states it is understood that student dress may reflect outdoor weather conditions throughout the school year. This is one thing I believe has been a positive change to the dress code, along with the dress code being more accepting of cultural and religious headwear. One of the areas of potential improvement might be the section that discusses how clothing may be considered a distraction to students and staff. This might be an area we intend on revising with more student input. After speaking with some students across the division, I've heard that some schools have chosen to keep the previous regulations in place. This might be an additional area that we may need to revisit to ensure consistency throughout the school division, as there may become some concerns that certain genders, ethnic backgrounds, and body shapes may be more impacted by these regulations. According to the dress code, it complies with the Virginia Code 22.1-276.01 and 22.1-279.6, that the dress code and grooming guidelines were created to maintain gender neutrality. To address this issue and to see the root of the concern, I'll be sending out a survey for the students to fill out and get feedback on their personal experience with the dress code, both in the past years and this year with the new dress code. I will combine the data to see if there's a correlation from students getting dress code in the past to now, and the amount of those who identify as the female gender being dress coded more than those who identify as the male. From there, I would like to get input from students on what specific guidelines should be included in the dress code and work with groups of students at each school to implement those changes. However, I will focus on much more than the dress code this year. One of the other major topics I brought up when I was being interviewed and applying for student representative was creating a more interconnected Prince William County community for the students. Because of this, I'm hoping to see some gathering this year with students from each school. I hope to have two to three students per each school of varying backgrounds in Prince William County to be nominated and to attend. At the gathering, it'll be a student-led event, hopefully by the other student representatives and the student senate. This will be a four-students-by-students event, which will make the environment more open, friendly, and comfortable for the students. Each of the students that attend will have a topic or issue to present, and we will work on how we can bring those issues to the light and see if there's any overarching themes that slip through the eyes of staff or faculty. The purpose is to see the different experiences students of all grade levels and varying backgrounds at Prince William County schools have. This is important because there's only so much that Charlotte, Mikle, and I can, as student representatives, can think of as the student voice. There are things we might not see just because of our own backgrounds that those of different backgrounds deal with on a daily basis. There's so much that goes unnoticed, and as student representatives, it is important for us to be the voice for those students. And in order to do so, we need to talk directly with the students and expose ourselves to the different issues through Prince William County. This is why I'm planning on holding that gathering of students as soon as possible. Additionally, we are hoping to set up a social media account and website for the student representatives in order for the Prince William County students to have direct access to reaching out to us and learning about the different ideas we have so that we can get their input. There are many more topics I will be working on and the other student representatives are hoping to work on, such as school start times or a mandatory study block, offering more variety in school lunch menus, and equity in school funding. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to be the student voice for Prince William County. Again, as we mentioned, from time to time, we encourage all students to reach out to us. We are always here to hear your concerns and questions. Thank you.
Excellent, Ms. Sharifi. Thank you. That was Danya Sharifi at Gainesville, our student rep. Excellent report. Moving on to superintendent's time, Dr. McCade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'd like to begin the superintendent's report by providing a brief update on COVID-19 as we are still feeling its impact. On October 8th, we paused in-person learning at Bennett Elementary School in Manassas, transitioning more than 700 students to remote instruction. As of Monday, October 18th, all students are back in classrooms. Also, last week, Pennington Traditional School Community received a communication notifying them that because of a recent rise in cases and quarantines, there was a possibility that certain mitigation strategies may be necessary, such as minimizing activities during the school day, limiting after-school and extracurricular activities, or even a temporary pause of in-person instruction. Fortunately, in collaboration with local health officials, we moved quickly to manage the situation and minimize spread. As a result, no additional steps were necessary, and students continued in-person learning without disruption. However, in these complex times, I want the entire PWCS community to know that we are working closely with experts and following the science. We will continue to approach the COVID situation with transparency, honesty, and integrity because nothing is more important than the safety of our students and staff. And we ask everyone, families, educators, and our entire community to continue to be vigilant and be safe. There are so many dedicated individuals who helped to make our complex school system of nearly 90,000 students move in sync, especially as the pandemic continues. Tonight, I'd like to recognize members of our Prince William County School family, our bus drivers. During School Bus Transportation Employees Appreciation Day and for the Bus Safety Week-- for School Bus Safety Week, our bus drivers are often the first and last interaction our students and families have with our division each day, and we are incredibly grateful to have dedicated drivers who transport our students safely and with so much care every day. We could not function without their dedication to students. To our bus drivers across our school division, thank you for all that you do for children. As many of us know, nationwide bus driver shortages have arisen during and because of the COVID-19 pandemic. That has also affected us here at PWCS. Right now, we have teachers and staff who are remaining at school past their contractually obligated time to supervise students who are waiting for buses to come back after their routes for pickup and drop-off. Those staff are going above and beyond to adapt to the needs of this moment, and their dedication is a testament to the caliber of people we have in our district. To that end, we will-- moving forward, we will be paying certified and classified staff members who are remaining beyond contract hours to supervise children that are waiting for buses using ARPA funds that will be distributed to schools. Again, we want to thank all of our employees for their hard work and commitment. Please know that we are working diligently to fill bus driver positions as quickly as possible. As COVID-19 continues to affect the operations of our division, tonight, we will be sharing the educational impacts of the pandemic. We will be delivering a full presentation of the State of the Schools report. This report outlines student learning and achievement numbers from the 2020-21 school year and the effects of the pandemic on academic progress. Over the last 18 months, unfinished learning has proven to be a nationwide education crisis. It's affecting every corner of our country. For us here at PWCS, it is important to regularly review our data and acknowledge the challenges before us while taking appropriate action to ensure continuous improvement. Make no mistake, the impacts of the pandemic have been felt across all of our school communities. As we work to recover, it will be important to provide every learner with the appropriate support needed to ensure academic progress. Additionally, as the most diverse county in the state of Virginia and 10th-most diverse in the United States, we are not immune to the disproportionate impact of the pandemic on our most vulnerable learners. This especially includes our English language learners and our economically disadvantaged students. The data show clearly that learning gaps that existed pre-pandemic have only been further exacerbated. While we have benefited from a short-term infusion of federal support to address unfinished learning as a school division, we remain concerned about the lack of parity in per-pupil funding in PWCS when compared to other school divisions regionally, as this impacts our ability to sustain the work of the Unfinished Learning Plan. This year's State of the Schools report includes additional data points and more disaggregation of data, as well as our response to the impact on academic progress. We honor the hard work of our teachers and leaders as they have put forth a Herculean effort to continue providing quality instruction during these challenging and unprecedented times. It is important to note that we should not make comparisons between pre-pandemic data and the data that is our current reality. However, we must use the available student data to identify our opportunities for growth, acknowledge that pervasive gaps continue, and take appropriate strategic actions to ensure that we prioritize continuous improvement. With the implementation of our comprehensive unfinished learning plan in place, we have identified key commitments that will be covered in the State of the School report. Academic recovery and learning acceleration will be targeted approaches for all students and hinges on all of us coming together. Recovery will not happen overnight, and we will be implementing our unfinished learning plan over multiple school years. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Jennifer Casada, Director of Research Accountability and Strategic Planning, who will present the available data to demonstrate the current state of our school division. She will be followed by Ms. Rita Goss, the Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, who will provide our strategic next steps in response to opportunities for growth related to our current state. Dr. Casada?
Thank you, Dr. McCade. Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. McCade. As Dr. McCade mentioned, this report is different from previous annual reports on the strategic plan. It looks similar in terms of structure, but this year it includes additional data points, more disaggregation of data, plus some key takeaways and next steps. All new slides are indicated with a yellow star, and I'll call them to your attention. This first chart is new and provides context to show how Prince William County schools compare in terms of size, demographics, and cost per pupil to our surrounding jurisdictions. This slide was added at the beginning of the presentation to provide context for understanding performance and needs. You can see on this slide that PWCS is the second-largest division in Virginia and the most diverse among our northern Virginia neighbors. You can also see a difference of up to $7,000 between Prince William County and our neighbors in terms of cost per pupil. Translated into actual funding, this can be up to $600 million. By way of reminder, the Virginia Department of Education waived accreditation for all schools in the state for 2020-- the 2020-2021 and 2021-22 school years due to the pandemic, so there's no new information to report here. VDOE accreditation ratings are based on performance in the following areas: proficiency in English, mathematics, and science, plus achievement gaps in English and mathematics, and chronic absenteeism. High schools are also rated on graduation and dropout rates. High schools are also rated on graduation and dropout rates. Just to go back in time, before the pandemic, 100% of schools in Prince William County were accredited without any conditions. Ratings will start again for 2022-23, which include data from this current school year. The first section of the presentation will look at performance on the standard-of-learning tests, but before we start that discussion, there's some critical context that's necessary about those tests last spring. This slide provides that important background for considering performance. In Spring 2021, SOL participation was significantly lower than in 2019, and it's important to note that the tests were not administered in the spring of 2020 due to the statewide closure. Rates were down over 40% in reading and 50% in mathematics in terms of who was taking the tests. It's also important to note that the SOL test must be administered in person under secure conditions. As such, a major contributing factor was the number of students who were learning virtually who then did not come into the schools to take those tests. Also, recall, as I mentioned, that those tests did not exist in 2020. It's important to note that the Virginia Department of Education highlights these same contextual factors for any overall, any on, any reports of SOL scores, and these participation drops were seen statewide. In addition, no expedited retakes were given to students in grades 3 through 8 in 2021. This was the case in most places in Virginia also. And finally, in terms of context, at high school, students needing tests to meet graduation requirements were given the opportunity to do retakes as necessary, so they were not harmed by that. We begin now by looking at reading and math performance for both Prince William County schools and Virginia in both 2019 and 2021. On each chart, Prince William County is on the left and Virginia performance is on the right. For color coding, the lighter blue is Prince William County, lighter color is 2019 and darker is 2021. You can see that performance dipped slightly in reading for both Prince William County and Virginia as a whole, and that it dropped significantly in mathematics for both Prince William County and Virginia and, in Virginia as a state. With our next several slides, we're going to examine that performance more closely. This first slide allows us to look at reading performance disaggregated by race/ethnicity for both Prince William County schools and Virginia. From left to right, you see performance of Black students, Hispanic students, white students, and Asian students. Again, before I go any further, just to let the public know, this slide presentation is available in Board Docs and will be posted to the Prince William County website. Slide decreases were seen in Prince William County and Virginia across groups from comparison to 2019. This is another look at reading performance for both Prince William County and Virginia, but it's disaggregated by different student groups based on, from left to right, economic status, English learners, and students with disabilities. You can see that those pass rates dropped both in Prince William County and Virginia for all of these groups. Our next two slides show us the same information as the previous two but for mathematics. Here we see, again, Prince William County performance in mathematics disaggregated by race and ethnicity. Again, same direction, left to right. Across the board, from Prince William County and Virginia, you see significant drops in performance from 2019 to 2021. And this slide disaggregates that same mathematics performance by student group for both Prince William County and Virginia. Again, we see significant drops in performance across all of these groups, both locally and statewide. This slide examines Prince William County performance slightly differently. The purpose here is to allow us to examine the gaps between the performance of our students in identified priority groups, again, our economically disadvantaged students, our English learners, and our students with disabilities, to the performance of students not in those groups. It's important to note, these charts only examine Prince William County students' performance. As a visual aid, the yellow outlined box shows the gaps between the groups being compared. The chart on the left shows reading performance, and the one on the right shows math performance. Both charts show some persistent gaps in performance, and in many cases, as Dr. McDade indicated, existing gaps were exacerbated during the pandemic. Remaining on SOL performance but looking at things slightly differently, this slide looks at the percentage of our students who scored at the pass-advanced level by subject area, both for Prince William County schools and Virginia. In reading, pass-advanced rate stayed level from 2019 to 2021. However, in math, just with, as with overall performance, there were significant drops. It's very important to note here that the number of tests taken in Science and Social Studies were reduced due to changes in the number of SOL tests required for graduation, as well as the use of local assessments in Social Studies in 2020-2021. This slide is a new slide for this year, and it shows us the pass-advanced performance by gifted status. You can see that the students identified for gifted services score at the pass-advanced level at a significantly higher rate than students not identified as gifted. The highest pass-advanced rates for both groups were in writing, with the lowest in mathematics. Speaking of mathematics, you can see that in mathematics, as well as Social Studies and Science, there were significant drops in pass-advanced rates for our gifted students in 2021 as compared to 2019. Our next two slides look at the percent of our graduates who have earned at least one qualifying score on an advanced placement, international baccalaureate, or Cambridge exam, which is one way for students to earn college credit while they're in high school. As with the SOLs, the participation on these advanced exams was impacted in the past two years by the pandemic. In fact, the IB and Cambridge exams did not occur at all in the spring of 2020. The latest published data from the College Board indicate that 24% of high school graduates nationwide had learned, earned at least one of these qualifying scores. The Virginia average was 29%. In Prince William County, that average this past year was 31%. Given the trend before the pandemic, we do expect that this number to rebound. This next slide, which is new, breaks the performance from the previous slide down by student group and allows us to disaggregate the data. The chart on the left disaggregates by race/ethnicity, and the chart on the right shows those student group comparisons as we've done before, by economic status, English learner status, disability status, and also, on the far right, by gifted status. Again, that yellow outlined box is a visual representation of the gaps between groups. You can see there are significant gaps between groups in terms of the attainment of these qualifying scores, which is, again, one way for students to earn college credit. Speaking of college, the next three slides look at SAT and ACT data for our graduating seniors. The inclusion of college readiness benchmarks identified by both SAT and ACT is new for this year's presentation. The first slide looks at the 2020-2021 SAT scores overall and by ethnicity. It's important to note that the performance is shared by, for Prince William County schools, Virginia, and global comparisons. This is a change from the past when the College Board reported national performance. Now they report global performance. SAT participation globally, as well as locally, was impacted by the pandemic. The SAT scores for 2021 seniors in Prince William County represent scores from 2,756 students, which represents 41% of the senior class, which is down from 3,618 students in 2020. So Prince William County performance overall tends to exceed global performance but is below the state averages. For our Black students, Prince William County performance exceeds both state and global performance. As mentioned on the last slide, the SAT scores for 2021 seniors represent a smaller number of seniors than in the previous years. This slide includes some of that context on the number of students taking the SAT by student group, as well as the percent of students meeting college readiness benchmark scores. Overall, Prince William County had 52% of our test takers meet the benchmarks in both reading and writing, that's one section of the test, and mathematics. When added, when those two scores are added together, the benchmark score set by the College Board totaled 1,010, so 10-10. Average scores from the previous slide for all racial and ethnic groups in Prince William County do exceed that benchmark. This slide includes ACT performance for graduating seniors in 2021. This information was just published and released by the ACT just last week. Prince William County average composite scores increased in 2021, that's what's on the left, and it is higher than national averages but below state averages. However, it's very important to note that only 320 of the graduating seniors in 2021 in PWCS took the ACT. That's only 5% of the graduating class. This does continue a downward trend over the past few years in terms of ACT participation. The second chart shows performance relative to the ACT college readiness benchmark for each subject area, which are listed below the chart. Overall, 50% of students in Prince William County who took the ACT met those benchmarks in all four of the subject areas. Moving on, Prince William County has always looked at average daily attendance and continues to meet this target, which captures the average percent of students present in school on a given day over the course of the year. Later in the presentation, information is included about chronic absenteeism, which is a different way to examine student attendance patterns. Our next few slides look at graduation and dropout rates. This first slide shows the on-time graduation rate for Prince William County for the past five years. In 2021, that rate was 92.8%. This graduation rate takes a cohort approach, meaning it looks at the percent of students who graduate within four years of starting high school. This formula does make adjustments for those students, our English learners and our students with disabilities, who are allowed by federal law to take longer to graduate, and those students are still counted as on-time. This slide shows the on-time graduation rates by student group for Prince William County, the state as a whole, and surrounding jurisdictions. The total cohort side is included for context. The 2021 on-time graduation rate for Prince William County was just below the state average, as well as below several neighboring jurisdictions. An on-time graduation rate for our Hispanic students, our English learners, our disadvantaged students, and our students with disabilities fall below our division average. This new, this slide is new to this year's presentation also, and it looks at the percent of a given cohort who dropped out before graduation. So overall, Prince William County had a 5% dropout rate in 2021, but that rate was above 10% for our Hispanic students, English learners, and students with disabilities. Dropout prevention is part of the focus on student and family reengagement component of the Unfinished Learning Plan. This slide looks at the percent of our graduates who earn dual enrollment credit, which is a second way our students can earn college credit while in high school. That percentage actually continues to increase, and it was up to 22% of our seniors in 2021. The next two slides look at this information in combination with some other data about early college credentials. First, we look at how, we take a look at the data for those students earning early college credentials in the two different ways: dual enrollment and APIB Cambridge exams and those combined. So overall, 41% of our graduates in 2021 earned dual enrollment credit or APIB or Cambridge credit while in high school. Many of these students earned both, and that's important to note. Again, the numbers for APIB and Cambridge decreased during the pandemic, but we expect them to rebound. This slide is a new one for this presentation and is a look at that early college credentials by student group. The slide shows that there are wide ranges in the percent of graduates from different groups earning these early college credentials. In all cases, there were drops from 2019 to 2020 with some slight rebounds in 2021. Sticking with college, the next two slides look at college readiness in terms of how the Virginia community college system looks at it. There are many different ways to be measuring college readiness. This metric is included as a stopgap until the Virginia Department of Education Accreditation System includes their new College Career and Civic Readiness Indicator that will be included beginning with the graduating class of 2023. The Virginia Community College System has a number of measures that can be met to show college readiness. Many of them are test-based, like the PSAT, ACT, SAT, AP, et cetera. In 2021, 70% of our seniors met those benchmarks. The next slide breaks this information down by student group. Again, this slide is new for the presentation. It includes the full 2021 12th-grade cohort in terms of total numbers, as well as the numbers that met the college readiness benchmarks. Overall, there were 6,722 seniors in 2021, and of those, 4,733 met these college readiness benchmarks. The charts disaggregate the data by race/ethnicity on the left and by student group with those gap comparisons on the right. Again, that yellow outlined box serves as a visual representation of the gaps between groups. This next slide provides information about students earning advanced diplomas. Overall, 52% of the graduates in Prince William County in 2021 earned advanced diplomas, a number that's been pretty stable over recent years. The chart on the right shows the breakdown by student group and race/ethnicity. You can see the variations that exist across groups. This next slide is a new one for this presentation, and it looks at post-secondary enrollment of our graduates. The Virginia Department of Education publishes this information every January. It's important to understand that it looks at the percentage of graduates who enroll in post-secondary education within 16 months, think of it as a year and a summer, after their graduation. That's why there's a delay in reporting. So this chart shows the enrollment for the graduating classes of 2017, 2018, and 2019. For 2019 graduates, 72% had enrolled in two- or four-year institutions of higher education by the fall of 2020. The table includes this information for student groups, as well as the proportion by the type of institution, four-year public, four-year private, and two-year. This 72% total is down from 75% for the class of 2017. We also anticipate a post-pandemic rebound. Future data presentations will include information about the multiple pathways for our students after graduation, including higher education, military, and the workforce, which will allow us to have a fuller picture of our students once they leave us. So the next several slides examine access by looking at the participation of our traditionally underrepresented student groups in gifted programs, advanced courses, and CTE, Career and Technical Education. This first slide looks at elementary and middle school gifted participation, elementary school on the left and middle school on the right. Overall, at both elementary and middle school, 18% of the students in Prince William County schools were identified for gifted students. These, the slide shows the participation rates for our disadvantaged students, minority students, students with disabilities, and English learners, and that they're all below the division average, showing some disparate rates of access. It is really important also to note, though, that the gifted identification processes could not be fully completed in 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic. This next slide shows the same, similar information for high school, but it looks at it by gaps, and it shows the gaps for student group based on economic status, English learner status, disability status, and minority status. Again, those pesky yellow boxes show our visual representation of the gap. These gaps have remained stable over the past three years. And again, as noted on the previous slide, the gifted identification processes were not able to be fully completed during the pandemic. The next piece of access is looking at participation in advanced courses, APIB and Cambridge by student group. This is participation in the courses themselves across all of high school. Again, the yellow boxes show the gap between underrepresented groups and the comparison groups, and these gaps have remained stable over the past three years. Here's another new slide for this presentation, and it's looking at the performance of students enrolled in APIB Cambridge courses during a given year on the exams, disaggregated by both race and ethnicity, which is on the left, and by student group on the right. As has been noted before, participation in these tests was down in the past two years. Overall, counts were down close to 3,000 from 2019 to 2021 in Prince William County schools. In 2021, 51% of our students who took tests earned qualifying scores. Again, remember that in 2020, IB and Cambridge exams did not occur. So data from this current school year, the 2021-22 school year when we have this, will provide us with a fuller story of performance in this area. This next slide is also new to the presentation. It looks at participation in CTE courses by student group. It's important to note that the requirements for standard and advanced diplomas have required students to take some CTE courses. New graduation requirements started with the current senior class, those class, those students beginning ninth grade in 2018 and 19. So Prince William County has traditionally looked at the identification of students for special education as part of this. In 2020-2021, 11% of students division-wide were identified for special education. Most student groups were close to that percentage, with the highest proportion for Black students at 14% and lowest for Asian students at 6%. So each year, we present data on discipline referrals by student group. In 2020-2021, discipline referrals in general were infrequent due to the unusual nature of that school year with so many students participating virtually. As a result, it makes interpretation challenging, and we cannot rely on the data from last year to draw conclusions about any decreases. Before the pandemic, counts of discipline referrals were trending down. However, those patterns, as well as exclusionary discipline patterns across student groups, will be studied again this year now that over 97% of our students are attending in person. Earlier in the presentation, you heard me say, when we looked at average daily attendance, that we look at attendance another way. Another metric related to attendance is chronic absenteeism. This is one of the measures included in the VDOE Accreditation System. VDOE defines chronic absenteeism as a student missing 10% or more of that student's membership days. So for an average year of 180 days, if a student's enrolled all year, if they miss 18 days, they meet the threshold. The percent of students meeting this threshold was higher in 1920 than in 1819. Chronic absenteeism rates were decreasing over the three years before the pandemic. As with the previous slide, the data for 2020-21 are incomplete due to the unique nature of last year. This year will provide us with more reliable data since, again, 97+% of our students are attending school in person. This next slide is new to the presentation. While chronic absenteeism has been included before, this slide disaggregates the data by race/ethnicity, the chart on the left, and by student group, the chart on the right. Again, the yellow box is a visual representation of the gaps. Moving forward, these data disaggregations provide important information as to where to target resources to combat absenteeism, as again, part of that focus on reengagement with students and families. We are nearing the end of the data portion of the presentation. This slide looks at overall satisfaction rates by student group, I'm sorry, by stakeholder group in 2020-2021. The satisfaction rates for parents were level with the previous two years. Those surveys are typically administered in January and February. Those surveys are typically administered in January and February. Satisfaction rates were above 90% for parents, central office staff, and school-based staff, and at 88% for students. Updated surveys are in development for this year to help get a better understanding into the root causes limiting satisfaction for students and other stakeholder groups. In order for our students to be successful, it is critical that they have highly qualified teachers, meaning teachers who are trained and endorsed in the content they are teaching. This graphic shows that the percent of students taught by highly qualified teachers in every one of their classes was at 97% in 2020-21, as it was in the previous two years. It is important to note, however, that it remains quite challenging to fill some positions, and hot off the presses as of today, we have 90 general education, school-based instructional vacancies, and 45 special education instructional vacancies as of today. This next slide looks at the, a number of National Board Certified Teachers in Prince William County. This number decreased in 2020-2021 after remaining stable over the previous three years, and includes everyone in Prince William County who's a nationally board-certified teacher. The teacher turnover rate in Prince William County schools continues to slightly decrease, with the flipside meaning the teacher retention increases slightly. This information is at the division level. Further analyses into teacher mobility and turnover at the school level are planned and will be communicated publicly. These analyses would allow for the targeting of resources to support schools with higher levels of teacher mobility. This concludes the data portion of the presentation. Just as a reminder, the public can access data in many areas of the, on the Equity Scorecard website, which can be reached from the main Prince William County Public Schools homepage. The Equity Scorecard includes data disaggregations in a variety of areas to examine access and performance through an equity lens. The Scorecard provides a tool to use to monitor progress in it providing equitable opportunities for students. More comparisons are added each year. Currently, the Equity Scorecard includes data in the following areas: Student and staff demographics, which will soon be updated with the official Fall 2021 membership data; Assessment, that's the SOL performance in all subject areas; College and career readiness, to include also advanced exams, SAT, ACT, graduate, graduation dropout rates, et cetera; and then program participation. Again, that's, those are the access measures we discussed tonight; and learning climate. This is a variety of measures, ranging from discipline to teacher data to even some facilities data. The Equity Scorecard is currently being finalized with the new data and Fall 2021 membership data. It is now my privilege to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Goss, who will discuss key takeaways from the data, as well as some of the next steps in response. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairwoman Zargarpur, and School Board members. Tonight, we have reviewed the division's data, and we have shared the current reality for our school division. These areas that we, there are areas that we proudly celebrate, and as you have seen, in the spirit of transparency, we have identified areas where we are not hitting the mark that we need to hit for all students. Our division had the opportunity, had opportunity and achievement gaps before the pandemic, and like school divisions across the nation, those gaps have been worsened by the pandemic. It is important to be careful not to make blanket comparisons between the pre-pandemic data and the pandemic data, given that there are a number of unique qualities of the data sets, including that during the pandemic, we had a number of students who did not take assessments like the SOLs. However, it is also important to note that the pandemic data highlights the specific areas we need to be intentional about addressing our achievement and opportunity gaps. Focusing on continuous improvement, some takeaways from the data are that our achievement in reading, while comparable with other years, still dropped seven percentage points, and the gaps for some student groups are widening. While we expected and saw impacts in reading, the data for mathematics was significantly impacted with our division seeing a drop of almost 30 percentage points. While we celebrate our overall graduation rate of 92.8%, we also acknowledge that there are significant gaps in the graduation rates for English learners and Hispanic students. We acknowledge that the dropout rates for English learners, Hispanic students, and students with disabilities is over 10% for each group. Simply put, that is at least 10 out of every 100 students in each of these groups is leaving school without reaching the finish line of graduation. We cannot ignore this. We have access and performance gaps that remain for priority groups of students in the areas of gifted identification and advanced courses for Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, and Cambridge. Overall, unfinished learning exists for all students, including our advanced and gifted learners. So you may be asking, what is our plan to address these key takeaways? The next slides will focus on some of the specific levers and strategies we will be using to address some of our most concerning gaps in the data. As you are aware, we developed and are beginning to implement the Unfinished Learning Plan, which seeks to address unfinished learning through research-based academic and social-emotional learning strategies. We are focusing on the instructional core by ensuring that the tasks students are doing are aligned to the standards and are at the appropriate cognitive level of demand. Continuous improvement is paramount, so we will be conducting division-wide school instructional rounds at all levels, which will provide us a consistent way of monitoring and determining the next level of work at our schools. Additionally, all instructional staff will be participating in professional development on key foundations of the Unfinished Learning Plan, like learning acceleration, high dosage tutoring strategies, the instructional core, and rigor. We want all of our students to be engaged in authentic tasks that actually ask them to do the work as mathematicians, scientists, readers, writers, historians. We all know that what students practice, they get better at. Continuing with other Unfinished Learning Plan commitments, the division is ensuring equitable access to rigorous, high-quality, culturally-relevant curriculum through consistent use of the division-created content units on Canvas and the implementation of our newly adopted English Language Arts textbooks and core materials. It's important to note that this is the first time we've done a division-wide purchase and distribution of these English Language Arts materials to ensure that every student in Prince William County has access to the same core materials for English Language Arts, class to class, school to school. We are also using Lexia Core 5 and Power Up. These adaptive learning programs specifically address early literacy and foundational literacy skills for elementary and secondary students respectively, and we know from our data that these are two important areas. Given the amount of unfinished learning, we must be focused on accelerating student learning. One of the ways we are doing this is through high dosage tutoring during the school day and in extended, expanded learning opportunities. Different from remedial tutoring, high dosage tutoring is consistent at least three times per week for 30 to 45 minutes, intensive, targeted instruction based on student needs, which involve the teaching of priority power standards or enduring understandings in the curriculum, and the prerequisite essential knowledge and skills needed for the student to successfully access grade-level material that is forthcoming in future curriculum learning. Given all the demands of the pandemic on teachers and school leaders, we are supporting teachers and leaders with this strategy through self-paced, remotely-accessed professional learning in Canvas. Additionally, as a part of the ARP funding for the Unfinished Learning Plan, $4.6 million have been allocated directly to all 96 schools to support the hiring of tutors. Another important aspect of this plan is our re-engagement of families through transparent communication, dedicated outreach, education, and opportunities for authentic partnerships. An example of this being actualized is the $1.2 million that has been allocated to 20 schools to hire parent liaisons. These 20 schools had the highest losses in enrollment and chronic absenteeism during the pandemic, and the liaisons will help schools directly address both of these issues. As we all know, this pandemic has taken a toll on social-emotional health and well-being of staff and students. As such, part of the Unfinished Learning Plan is focused on addressing these needs for both students and staff. We have 315 current employees who will serve as social-emotional learning coaches in schools to support staff beginning this year. And beginning next year, there will be a division-wide implementation of Virginia's social-emotional learning standards. Using ARP funding, $658,000 have been directly provided to schools in support of positive school climate and staff and student wellness initiatives. $1.2 million has been dispersed to schools to cover the cost of teacher training and time spent learning social-emotional concepts. The ultimate goal is to change the manner in which teachers and other school-based staff respond to a variety of student behaviors in schools. Additionally, $1.6 million has been allocated towards school-based mental health professionals to address unfinished social-emotional learning for some students, including a focus on unfinished post-secondary planning and school connectedness. Students with the most needs, who are experiencing academic difficulties, will also receive individual support. One of the key takeaways from our data tonight was the significant drop of almost 30 percentage points in math. As a result, here are some of the intentional strategies we are implementing to address this. 21 schools that have been prioritized through the Unfinished Learning Plan, UNDEX, are receiving intensive, of needing intensive academic supports, will each receive a math coach. We are strengthening classroom instruction by focusing professional learning on areas of need seen in the data, such as numbers and number sense. We are investing in common assessments and regular progress monitoring of learning mastery so we can modify instructional strategies, supports, and interventions in real time based on student needs. The curriculum pacing guides and units have been redesigned or updated to focus on supports for high dosage tutoring and acceleration. Those supports can be seen in the curriculum and Canvas, and they include clear identification of essential prerequisite skills and enduring understandings. As I said earlier, these are key to learning acceleration and the high dosage tutoring we will be doing with students. We are also utilizing programs that supplement learning or enhance instructional focus and delivery in math. You see a few of those on the slide: Dreambox, Math Navigator, Assessing Math Concepts. As you saw in our data, our English learners are one of our priority student groups that we must strategically focus our continuous improvement efforts on in order to close the gaps and address unfinished learning. In support of consistent implementation of research-based best practices, we are focusing on professional learning and onsite coaching in support for teachers of English learners on language development, specifically academic and social language development. As you know, the pandemic has impacted the development of both of these. We are focusing on lesson planning that includes alignment between the content and language objectives. Another essential area is ensuring that our English learners are getting daily opportunities to use academic vocabulary and texts that reflect the diversity of our students. Students need to see themselves in the learning. Another priority group that we saw in the academic and opportunity gaps is our students with disabilities. So we need to be intentional with our response to this data. We all understand that reading is essential to learning success in all subject areas. Teachers and support staff are receiving Orton-Gillingham training. Orton-Gillingham is a highly structured approach that breaks reading and spelling down into smaller skills involving letters and sounds, and then builds on these skills over time. It is an explicit, direct, sequential, systematic, multi-century instructional approach to teaching reading, and this approach directly addresses the needs of our dyslexic learners and other struggling readers. The division is working with teachers and leaders to increase the frequency of progress monitoring for the academic, social-emotional, and behavioral areas of need that are noted in student IEPs and 504 plans. We are also working to assess the research-based intervention programs being utilized in schools to ensure that those being used are the best intervention to actually address each student's identified needs. The division data clearly demonstrates pandemic impacts, and those impacts, as we have said, have affected all students, including our gifted and advanced learners. The Unfinished Learning Plan includes research-based practices to address this group of students, and we are implementing strategies to address the learning and opportunity gaps for these students as well. Refocusing on consistent collaborative planning between gifted teachers and classroom or content teachers is one of those strategies. Using unit pre-assessments, informative data to determine the needs of students and purposely respond to the accelerated needs of these advanced or gifted learners is also important. Ensuring that gifted education teachers lead enrichment, as well as acceleration groups, and push into classrooms and consistently provide classroom teachers with those resources that need to be differentiated and strategies differentiated for the success of these students is another important strategy. Designing and implementing curricular units to emphasize that student collaboration and communication skills. The pandemic impacted the ability for our students to develop these skills, and we know that they are vital to our students being successful post-secondary as global citizens. An important part of this work to address the needs of gifted students is also our work to increase the identification of underrepresented priority groups of students through targeted professional learning and doubling down on our early talent development, which exposes all our youngest learners to advanced learning opportunities, including critical thinking and problem-solving. In summary, our division has areas to be proud of, but we also openly recognize that we have a lot of work to do to close the learning and opportunity gaps, which is the only way we will realize our vision of every student, not a few, not some, but all students having a thriving future. I want to take this opportunity to sincerely thank all our teachers, leaders, instructional staff, and support staff in schools and across the division for their dedication, hard work, perseverance, and that, as Dr. McDade said, they're Herculean efforts, especially during this pandemic. Recovery from the pandemic will take multiple years and all of us working together. But under Dr. McDade's amazing leadership and with the implementation of our Unfinished Learning Plan over the next two years and the next steps outlined tonight, in direct response to our data, with the dedication of our outstanding employees and the partnership of our families and community, I am confident we are on the road to begin addressing unfinished learning, closing the achievement and opportunity gaps, and realizing the vision of a thriving future for all our students. and realizing the vision of a thriving future for all our students.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. At this time, myself, Ms. Goss, and Dr. Casada will take any questions related to the data presentation. I also just want to reemphasize that many of the strategies and initiatives that have been outlined for addressing the data is over multiple years. So this is not an expectation that all of these strategies will be employed in a single year because that is not possible, and all of the research is showing that the results of the impact of the pandemic will require multiple years of recovery. Much of what you heard around core instruction, so many of our schools are doing a tremendous job addressing much of this already. So this is in alignment with what many continuous improvement plans have in place and shouldn't be an add-on, but should enhance the work that's happening. But it is important to recognize that a lot's happening in our schools today, and it is no expectation that everything that was outlined is going to happen immediately in a single year.
Questions? Okay, well, I'll start with one. Just, Ms. Casada, maybe you can help me answer this, and it might just be that this is how these slides are set up. But Slide 27 on college readiness and Slide 30 on post-secondary enrollment. It seems like, I don't know if it's by accident or this happens just normally, but in 18 or, you know, 18 and 20, 74 and 69% of our students met college readiness. Or 19, let's say 19, 71% met college readiness. And then you look at the post-secondary enrollment for 2019 cohort, 72% went to college, I guess. Is this set up so that it's supposed to look like that? Or, you know, can you explain these two slides? So we say, okay, 72% meet college readiness benchmarks by the state, and then we just happen to have 72% of our students go to college?
So that's a great question, Dr. Latif. I can tell you that for the college readiness benchmark you cite on Slide 27 is metrics from the Virginia Community College System when they are determining, you know, placement out of particular courses. So that you can see, it's not surprising to me that it's a correlation with the post-secondary enrollment, but those numbers are computed independently, right? So the 72% of enrollment, that's actual enrollment, and so some of those, you know, so we haven't done...
And they're not all community college?
They're not all community college, no. So that 72% includes community college, includes four-year public, four-year private. That includes all of those.
And that's a remarkable relationship because it's pretty consistent. When, on the college readiness, it's only the community college testing the students who come there.
No, we use, we apply their benchmark to all of our seniors.
I see.
So that's a good clarification. So we apply that benchmark to all of our seniors using what they use. So that's not just for, that's a great question, not just for their students who enroll, but we applied that and did the analysis. So it's really not surprising that those numbers are very similar. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so it would be fair for me to conclude that if we improve our college readiness, that post-secondary number goes up.
That would seem like it could be a correlation.
Okay. All right, great. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I want to talk about math for just a second. As the daughter of a math teacher, I had the unique privilege of having workbooks all the time because my dad would just bring that stuff home. So I wasn't allowed to be bad at math or anything like that. I always had practice, even if it was just basic skills. And I'm looking at these math scores, and I know the pandemic was really hard on everybody. It's hard to teach on, well, some things may not be as easy to teach online. I just, what accounts, do we know what accounts for that big drop in math? Or does it have something to do with, kind of like, I mean, is it consistent K to 12? Are there grade levels or areas that we're looking at that are more critical than others? And I tell you, I have a 16-year-old. I'm worried about what's going to happen to her. Her unfinished learning is going to run out, and she's got to go. So I know there's parents like me who've got kids in high school who are worried. And I have constituents who've brought up math a lot. They're very worried about this, especially the high school kids. So, and it's kind of a broad question, but could you, is there something you could talk about a little bit that would help us get some insight as to maybe what's going on? And maybe, maybe some more specifics about what we can do?
I think, Dr. Casada, you can address the piece about what we can extrapolate from the data and not. And then we'll follow up with some of the response to what we do, especially with our learners that are on their way out of Prince William County.
So what I can say, Ms. Zargarpur, is it's not unique to Prince William County, and it's not unique to a particular grade level. While the level before the pandemic was different at elementary, middle, and high school, you saw significant drops across the board in terms of those, and that was seen statewide also. So I can't extrapolate as to the causes for that, but you can see that it was not a unique phenomenon to one level or one test or one student group, for that matter.
And then I think the other piece to note is that we're going to have to, you know, take a hard look at the fact that we have multiple years of unfinished learning in terms of addressing and covering standards for mastery. And math, there's prerequisite skills that have to occur. And so when those are missed, you know, even now, this year, with students coming back in, there are a lot of skills that teachers would have had to revisit, you know, over the course of the last two years, depending on what level of instructions some students may have received. And so that's one thing. I don't think we have a concrete answer for why the data looks that way outside of the fact that we know the significant impact came from unfinished learning. But I will say, for those students who, for all students across the board, the high dosage tutoring is one of the research-based best practices that we are going to be using, as well as extended learning opportunities. And the beauty of the high dosage tutoring is that, you know, it gives an opportunity to accelerate learning while teach, in collaboration with teachers covering the core content. And I'll let Rita, if you have anything to add there in terms of how we're addressing math.
Well, I think, Mrs. Zargarpur, one of the beauties about us being back in school relative to math instruction is the ability for our students, especially at our lower grades, but really at the middle school also, to utilize math manipulatives that are very helpful in building that understanding. You saw some of those adaptive programs that we're also utilizing in order to supplement instruction. It's clear that there's probably a number of reasons why the data is what it is, but each of our schools is working to really examine their baseline data as students enter to determine those unique needs of every student. You heard Dr. McDade say about the high dosage tutoring as one of those strategies. So really, that is where we're focusing, is each student by name and by need. And every student has a different level of unfinished learning going forward in mathematics. But we are doing a full court press on professional learning and onsite coaching and a number of strategies, including the ones that we put here, shared with you tonight.
So we'll stick to math questions since the presentation was extraordinarily comprehensive. Let's wrap up the math concerns, and then we'll move on to another topic. So if anyone has any math questions, Ms. Zargarpur.
Just one other quick thing. So I understand, like, a spiral curriculum, you know, math. You got to have number sense, and you just keep building on these skills. We all understand that. Can we also speak a little bit to the kids who are in these higher math classes? We've got middle school kids who are in advanced math. That's those places where they're starting to get algebra. Some are getting geometry, or maybe even Algebra II. There's a couple of kids here and there, right? And then when they get into high school, since this is a concern where some of my constituents specifically have asked. So we're on this continuum. And I think it would be really hard to be like, yay, I'm in calculus, calculus A B, but then I'm struggling. And what are we doing for kids who are like, they need that little extra support, but they're still capable of those higher, higher levels? And where are we getting these high-quality tutors? Or, I know, that's a great question. I mean, how are, how are we finding folks and things like that?
So there were a lot of questions in there, so I want to try to make sure I respond to each one of those. You asked the question about our learners who may be more advanced at middle or high school, and what are we doing about those students? So for one thing, let's be honest, we are not going to be able to reteach every concept that was missed over the last two years. So what we're focused on, when you heard us talk about acceleration and the research base around that, if you kind of look at it like a roadway that may have, because of the pandemic, lots of potholes, and we want kids to cross that roadway, we are not filling all of those. Rather, we're building a bridge by, for students to cross over that roadway to the grade-level curriculum that they're working on by really focusing in on those priority standards or that, those essential skills that they have to have. And we're utilizing a lot of resources that were put forward by the Virginia Department of Education. And they have put out what we're calling quick checks or pre-assessments. So we make sure that we're targeting our tutoring or our supports of students, even those highest learners, with the instruction that is tailored to what their needs are so that they can access that, that learning. And you're right to be concerned about it. We are all concerned about the math progress of our students. I believe the second question that you asked was about, I want to say, will you repeat your second question?
I think the other part was about, you know, this idea that we are going to offer high dosage tutoring, yet there is a dearth of talent available to, you know, human capital to address this. And I'll let Rita weigh in a little bit more on this, but we are, we are recognizing that some of this will not be able to be implemented immediately. But we are using creative solutions that go beyond expecting that the teachers can't do it all, right? The teachers are still teaching core, and so they have to have support around this. So looking at how the universities can support us with pre-service teachers that need hours, with college students, because there's going to be training for the tutors in addition to the fact that we can use TAs to service tutors as well. And now we also are looking at capability of vendors to provide services to schools. So those are just some of the creative solutions. But not to ignore the fact that this is going to be a challenge to get the kind of support that's needed and that it won't happen immediately, but over time. Some schools have already found ways to implement this through using small group approaches and the way that they schedule their, the teacher's time. But I do know that Rita has given some model guidance to schools. Just this week, we started with middle and high school where we provided some specific models of how they can schedule during the day for high dosage tutoring while not taking students away from core instruction where they need to be with their, with their teacher. So do you want to describe some of those models, Rita?
Sure, absolutely. And some of those models would be that we may pay teachers for a sixth section. So they're teaching an extra section, and we might have them pushing in to classes to pull small groups of students. Teachers, two teachers could even share a 90-minute block, pushing in for 45 minutes each, again, to pull aside those students and work with them during a time in which has already been developed in the, in the lesson plan around small group or independent work. And so that's, that's one way. You heard us talk about extended, expanded learning after school, so that's also another way. But other ways that we can look at doing this is through our co-teachers. You've heard us talk before about our co-teachers pushing in. And so some of this work around acceleration can be implemented by them as well as they are pushing in into the classroom. You also have kids who may be assigned to as a skills class or another class as a part of their schedule, especially at secondary. We have teachers who are already assigned some students to work with, and so they might be working with those. I don't want to leave out, I'm looking at you, Ms. Williams, that this also includes virtual students, right? So we have virtual students who have unfinished learning that are being included in these tutoring groups during the day. And that could be an in-person teacher or, like Dr. McDade said, an outside vendor that we're looking at, trying to find third-party vendors to provide us high-quality tutors who may be virtual or may be in person.
Ms. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I also had some questions. Ms. Zargarpur answered or asked most of my questions. But going back to the idea of the math coach, what, could you speak a little bit more to what we have in mind for the math coach to do? I guess some schools will have, will have a math coach. And the math coach, will that math coach be directing high dosage tutoring in math? Or if you could speak a little bit more to that, like, how that fits in with our recovery plan?
Sure, absolutely. So the math coach actually is not a person that's working with students. Their work is to work with teachers, to support teachers and enhancing their skills and teaching the subject matter. And so we may utilize, as you've already heard, we have some staffing challenges. So to be honest, we don't have a line of math coaches waiting at the door because we have this, you know, national teacher shortage. But we do have some educators in each school right now who may, again, have us be able to teach or work during a sixth section of the day during another time and be compensated for that. And they would then go into, into classrooms. They would be, you know, teachers that are getting good results, have excellent skills, and would go in and model lessons, support the teachers in planning for instruction, including that high dosage tutoring, right? Selecting the most appropriate prerequisite skills to focus on when they are doing that tutoring with students. So that's some of the ways a math coach would be used.
Okay, thanks. And I suppose we could also harness some of those other resources, like universities, college professors, math education professors, et cetera. Maybe somebody...
Absolutely.
Take on a charity project of Prince William County Schools or something like that.
We've been in communication with our partners, trying to...
Yeah. Okay, and I had another question. Again, kind of back to that high dosage tutoring. I know we talked about who and the challenges of who and the when and the how. I guess how the subsidies for this, this is coming out of ARP funds, right? And remind me, is that something that is for not just this school year, but the school year after that? And is that kind of the extent?
It's a two-year. Yeah, so schools will receive monies for high dosage tutoring this year and then again next year.
Okay, so we have, we have some cover on that for a little while.
Right, and, and I, you know, we talked about what the ideal state is. And the hope is that, you know, of course, we'll have to put some stopgaps in for this year for where we can't, to what Ms. Goss just stated, the ideal state would be able to have a math coach that that is their job, right? And they're not, they're not carrying a load. That's not what we want to happen. And what we've communicated to schools is that they should look at this as a two-year plan. So they should be planning now for going into next year. And our HR team is working on trying to recruit talent to fill these positions going into next year. And we've given some, you know, model guidance for what can happen, you know, this year, keeping in mind not to add on or overburden educators that are already dealing with a lot of challenges within the school, which is why I continue to emphasize that it is a two-year plan and is not an expectation for schools to go and implement all of this right away today because it's just simply not possible. But we do have to have a plan for recovery, and that's what this lays out.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I want to start out by complimenting Dr. McDade and her staff for this very, very comprehensive report. You know, many of us have been on this board for quite some time, and we've gotten data, but we've never gotten an after, what the planned next steps. And I also wanted to compliment you on that, I know that we've talked about having these briefings where I have lots of questions, but most of my questions, to be honest with you, were handled during those briefings. So I really want to thank you for that because I was able to look at all the slides and ask the questions. And I'm not going to ask a lot of questions tonight. I have a couple of thoughts and a couple of questions. But I, there always, every year I ask the same. I talk about high-performing schools, and the four questions are, are children learning? And you've shown us that. And how do you know you've given us the data? But the two categories, what are you going to do for those who are not, who do not master skills? And more importantly, what are you going to do for those kids who already know? And I see that there as an emphasis on giftedness and access. I am concerned about access when I look at some of the... When I look at some of the access data, middle and high school kids in Gifted Ed and in Cambridge, this is not a pre, this was not a pandemic situation. It was something that was already here, and it's been here. African-American kids are not in some of these programs. I'm very, very concerned, and I'm just making some statements, about the ELL population Hispanic because their access, their performance is something that I think you've targeted in your next steps, and you've talked about it. The other concern I have is how will we know if it's working? Will you come back to the board and say, high dosage tutoring is working, is not working? Will there be a time where we can reconvene and see if this is working? And thank you for saying, well, we're not sure about this because I think this board, they're very professional people. We don't want you to walk on water. Well, we do, Dr. McDade. I did say that. Sorry. But we just want to know, what are we going to do about kids who are not learning? What are we going to do about access? And it's a lot, I'm saying a lot, but the other concern I have, as you look at these graduation numbers, you got this high graduation rate. But I've been studying the research for quite some time, and I know that kids are graduating, they're going to college, but certain groups of kids, African-American kids, are in five-year college courses, they're taking remediation, the dropout rate is high. And the question I want to ask is, are we going to do anything to look at our students after enrollment? Because they're enrolled, but some of them are dropping out, and then others are in five-year courses. So I hope you've got some of those questions.
So that's a great question and one that is critically important to me. I've stated several times the importance of all students being able to have a strong concrete post-secondary plan, which goes beyond college to include students going into the workforce, having CTE credentialing to go into the industry, students going into the military, et cetera. But I think it's important, what you just called out, we could not, of course, identify all of the strategies that we want to employ over the course of not just two years, but in the four-year strategic plan. One of the goals, what the data that you did not see here tonight is persistence data, which shows us whether or not our students are persisting towards a college degree, meaning that we gave you enrollment data, which is a lagging indicator. And persistence data is also a lagging indicator. And the goal is to be able to bring forward persistence data to show, once our students enroll, are they persisting and remaining towards achieving a degree, whether that be in four or five years? So that is data that we are looking to capture within the school division that we have not, you know, been able to share tonight. That's one thing. Once we take a look at that and identify what is happening with our students and whether or not persistence is there or not, then identifying strategies to support so that students are not going into remedial courses because we know the outcome of that. Students who take remedial courses in college within their first year are 70% more likely to not persist towards obtaining a degree. And so there are things that we can put in place within the school division, like transitional math and transitional English in collaboration with our community college. So there's a lot of different strategies that, of course, would address some of the concerns with what happens to our students post-secondary. We simply could not, you know, codify all of that in tonight's presentation, but what you should expect, two things that you asked, will we come back? Yes, we will be evaluating not just implementation with fidelity, but effectiveness of the, you know, some of the approaches that we're putting in place over the course of the next two years. We also, beyond, you know, just coming back and saying whether or not some of those strategies are working, you should also expect that within the release of the four-year strategic plan, some of the strategies that you're asking about will be codified within that plan. That even goes beyond whether or not students go to college, but looking at how we're ensuring that whatever pathway our students choose in post-secondary, whether they're getting internships and apprenticeships, and how we're preparing them for the workforce. So it'll be multiple approaches, but that would be codified within the four-year strategic plan and not an immediate two-year plan like the unfinished learning plan.
Again, I want to thank you for all that you've done and for teachers out there and the principals, the principals and teachers. You know, I've been talking with them, and I've heard teachers and I'd say that they're overwhelmed, and I'm pleased to know that you realize that they're taking on a lot. You know, this pandemic, that's new. The language arts program, that's new. Then the high dose tutoring, that's new. You're new. And I think that your accessibility and letting people know that you're aware of what's going on, because some of the schools are really having problems. I think someone asked a question about high dosage tutoring. How do you get the tutors? Some are getting tutors and some are not. But I just want to thank you guys for a very, very comprehensive report and for giving us the good, the bad, and the ugly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. So I'll just wrap up the math discussion with, thank you, Dr. McDade. I think the, you know, it shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody in this room when, say, about January of last year, you know, upon asking how our grades were in math. So, you know, I've been criticized for looking at test scores. School division has been criticized at looking at test scores. So, you know, we looked at grades last year, first quarter, second quarter grades during virtual school, and in math, they were awful. They were beyond, they were terrible. And so, you know, that really predicted where we ended up. It shouldn't be a surprise. And so in the sense that as you look at the real-time things you're talking about, Ms. Goss, you know, when we look at real-time for this year's first quarter grades, you know, that should give us some indication, I hope, of, you know, what's working, what's not working, who needs work, where the work needs to go. And I think, and I do appreciate your honesty, you know, and I talked about this the other day, you know, I'm getting, you know, if anyone were to ask me, what is the number one complaint as a school board member I'm getting right now? It's math from parents and students. That's what I'm getting. And when you said, you know, there are some things we might not be able to go back and teach, and if you look at your ninth graders who took Algebra II with trig, and we making maybe the greatest mistake in American history in not teaching the end of fourth quarter in that year new material, students in Algebra and Algebra II with trig didn't get their trig, didn't get their last bit, and then they didn't have that to build on last year. Last year's grades suffered, the pandemic couldn't, you know, was challenging nationwide, understood. But we are now faced with those students arriving in the school and expected to know that material. And it is tough on those kids. So one thing I'd like to ask, as you guys look at first quarter, I'd like to know, how many students are dropping out of the current math class they're in? Ninth, tenth, and eleventh, twelfth, and drop back one level? And that I would like to be monitored very closely and ask that, you know, our counselors and teachers and everyone recognize the challenges the students went through as these students are making these decisions to drop out or to move around or, you know, to deal with Cs, Ds, Fs, that they're having challenges. And these are all, every one of our students is struggling on this. So I can't thank you enough for being honest with us this evening and showing us this material and having a plan. And as we look forward to addressing the plan, that'll be really critical. So non-math-related questions, I'll go to Ms. Williams. She's had her hand up. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the discussion we just had on math because I have not received the same level of math questions from my constituents, but I do understand the importance because it is one of those subjects that if you don't get the right foundation, it's very hard to move on. What I do want to say is echo my board members in saying thank you for this presentation. It is refreshing to not only see where we were, where we stand, and where we plan to go. I do want to say just for a moment to our watching public that one of the things I do get a lot of commentary on is, at my job in corporate America, we just do. And I think that it's important that we take a moment to just address the fact that we are a very large school division, and I don't say that as an excuse. But I do say that because it is important for the public to understand that it does take time. Once a strategy is developed, then it is explained to a principal or administrator, then it has to be explained to a teacher or whoever's in charge of the classroom, TA, whoever is in that room. And then it has to be implemented. And those things don't happen overnight. I'm a school, elementary school parent all over again. I feel the same way sometimes. I have moments where I'm like, well, we should just wear the manipulatives. Well, how come we're not doing this? We should just do it. And then I have to remind myself that it's not that easy as we are overburdened, we are suffering staff shortages. Our kids are relearning, as the kindergarten teacher so eloquently put it, and I believe another teacher said, just relearning how to be in school. Our teachers and our staff are relearning how to be in school. And doing that based upon previous pandemic expectations, which is not the same reality as to where we are now. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, you know, it's worth taking a pause sometimes, even when we are frustrated. Everybody gets that way. I do as a parent sometimes and wish that things were moving faster pace or just in a better predicament for my child. And I just try to take a moment to realize that my son's teacher may have, you know, 29 other kids, and someone may be having a bad day. Maybe the teacher's having a bad day. There's much more of a human factor and component when it comes to educating our children than you find in other areas of business in corporate America or other industries. And I just don't think that that can be said enough because, especially now that we're coming out of the pandemic, we are urgent in our need and our desire to continue to educate our children and to do it at a pace that we each deem acceptable, and that varies for everyone. So I just wanted to say that because as Dr. McDade and we've heard tonight, this is not anything that can be implemented immediately. And I think sometimes we hear about a plan and then go, well, I haven't seen it yet. When is it going to happen? What do you mean it's going to take two years? And I think that just a moment to really give a second and state that, I think, is really important and should not be lost on this conversation because I'm guilty of getting impatient myself. So I know if I'm feeling it, other people probably are as well. I did, Ms. Goss, you read my mind when I was thinking of virtual students. I wasn't thinking so much in particular for math, but just in general. If we could, not at this time, but maybe when the update comes, just delve a little bit deeper into, or even maybe, you know, have a small presentation for our 4%, 5% of virtual families that specifically addresses their concerns or what it looks like for a virtual student with these remediation strategies. I'm not picky either way, but I think it's important that we don't forget them and what that looks like because it is different for someone in a classroom versus a virtual student. And that's specifically for elementary, middle, and high school because all three are different, right? Our high school is virtual Virginia, a lot of our middle schools are concurrent, our elementary is proximity. And I think that all of those things make a difference. And then one of the things that we talked about this evening was absenteeism with students. And one of the things that I would like to know in the, when we come back and revisit this, is what are we doing for absentee students, or students who are chronically absent, to welcome them back? And I say that because I deal with a lot of students who come, you know, I encourage them, come on, you need to go back to school, you need to graduate, you need to get back in class. And oftentimes, those students feel very stigmatized when they do return into a building. And we don't talk about how it is that we are addressing that to make those students feel like they should be there when they do return. And I think that that's a major indicator of why we're seeing some of these repeated absentee rates. And we've never addressed that conversation, at least to my knowledge while I've been on the board. And it's something I probably should have thought of earlier, but it just dawned on me, especially during this last year, having seen personally so many students decide not to return to school and sort of given up hope, and then a few who did and still felt very stigmatized by the fact that they were absent and the administration at a particular school didn't welcome them back when they did make the decision to come in. And then was, and then my last question also doesn't need to be entered now. What are we doing to support our students who are heavily burdened, maybe having to support their families in addition to going to school? If we could just give some highlights to our public on what that looks like from a school division perspective and how we support those students, I think would be very helpful because I'm not sure a lot of parents know that we do have programs and we do have supports in place, just simply because we don't talk about them often. So, thank you.
Just, like you said, this is, requires a much more in-depth conversation, but just to call out, and I'm sure I won't speak to this as eloquently as Becca or even Denise Hebner probably would because they're over social emotional learning and the PWCS Heals Initiative that we have. But there are a lot of, a lot of the training in social, emotional, and mental health well-being supports that are being put in place in schools is to address just that welcoming environments for all students. And we also currently have a partnership with Kaiser Permanente where they have a network of providers to, you know, support families that goes beyond what the school division can do. So we're working with them to tap into their network to address the latter part of your comment in terms of how are we helping families that have burdens that go beyond academic needs and go beyond the social services that school-based personnel can provide. So more, we can definitely provide more information about the PWCS Heals Initiative and how that would address some of the questions that you have.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just think when we're talking about these things and people are listening and we do have their attention, that we include that in the conversation. It's not necessary now, but I do think it's worth the acknowledgement. So thank you very much because I think schools are expected to do so much, and it's not often that we talk about the fact that as a school division, we can only handle so much, and then in turn, we partner with others to ensure that we continue to be able to support those students. So thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Teef. Thank you for the presentation today. It went into a lot of detail, both during the PowerPoint and then further conversation with Dr. McDade. I just want to also thank you very much for answering my questions ahead of time and including some of that information on the PowerPoint. I know that as we discuss data, it's not going to tell us the whole picture, it's not going to tell us the story behind every child, nor does it detail the efforts that the staff are putting forth. And it does sound like the division is aware that, and I can't think of a better word besides burden, that some of these steps we take on finding staff and the time of staff. Because this is a continued conversation, it sounds like we're going to be continuing revisiting this, and because I embrace that dialogue, I just have two follow-up questions. One, for clarification, because the presentation was so long and very informative, thank you. And the other is to help me understand some data, just for clarification. So for the first one, am I correct to understand that we will receive follow-up data to include statistics or mobility of staff from one school to another? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question is, when we talk about EL status, when it's on the PowerPoint, EL, you know, status is such a broad spectrum, like it can be, you know, different WEITA scores. For when we're looking at that status, and I think you've answered this in the past, but I just want to just, is it all WEITA scores or is it just some? Or like, what is the definition of an EL student? Thank you.
That's a fantastic question, Ms. Jackson, because from the state perspective, they change how they, what they included in terms of when they report performance. So for many of the disaggregations, particularly around the SOL scores, that EL designation only includes active students, so levels up to level five, you know, and not former students. And so if you recall, folks on the board, several years ago, all of a sudden, you saw precipitous drops in data, but because, some of that was because it was not apples-to-apples anymore. So former L students are not included. There are points at which the former Ls are included, and I'll make sure we can get a breakdown of for which pieces are there because I don't want to say something and say it wrong. But for all of the SOL data in particular, the L students mean active English learners, which is levels up to level five.
So I just have one follow-up. So then that would include, if we're given up to level five, that would include, no matter what type of L service you receive, would be included in that?
As long as they're receiving, they're receiving services and it covers those levels, yes. That's what, following the state definition for that category. So that's what we tend to use. But I want to make sure for all the comparisons that there's not something else in there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Ms. Wall, or Ms. Wilk, Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Thank you, staff, for that presentation. It's very comprehensive, and I really appreciate it. I think, like Lily Jesse said, to reiterate that, it's good to see all the data, the good, the bad, the ugly, and I think that's really important for this community. really important for this community to see. I'll be brief. I'm just going to ask one question to follow up with the other ones with you. But with the increased demand for skilled labor right now in this country, I was, you know, looking and seeing right now, there's a 360% increase for carpenters, 244% increase for electricians, 205% increase for welders. I've been looking at the slide about the CTE and understanding the sequences of courses leads to an actual credential and potentially industry certification. Can we get some data on the, the success of those programs? How many students are actually earning the credential before graduating from high school? I think it was said in the presentation during the post-secondary enrollments. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think you said this, Dr. Casada, that the state of Virginia would be providing information about not just post-secondary institutions, but trades, workforce, military participation? Is that what you said, like an alumni tractor type of thing?
So we said, and Dr. McDay spoke also to this, that that's something that we're going to be looking into. So we can get through, we can't get all of that from the Virginia Department of Education.
Yeah.
But that's, that's even through the Department of Labor and there's other places we can get that information. And then in terms of your question about CTE piece, there will be follow-up around CTE credentials and certifications. We're working with the CTE, fantastic CTE folks to make sure you get the right information for that.
We were calling that out as data that we recognize we need to have and explore.
Yeah.
Especially as we look to increase access, as well as identify the different pathways that our students are taking for post-secondary. So that's, that was the purpose for calling that out is to let you know that those are areas that we currently do not have data for, but that we are exploring how to capture that data and then, you know, report that out in short order.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. So I think that should wrap it up. I, I did have one question, one last question. I think it was, what's slide number? Seventeen. Slide seventeen. No, maybe, yeah. Is that right? Oh, see, yeah, slide seventeen. And I know, we've talked about this year after year, and I, and I just bring this up because this is a board priority and I know Dr. McDay's priority. But, you know, the largest percentage of our student population is Latino, Latinx population, Hispanic. And, you know, the number of Hispanic students taking the SAT is, is half, less than half of everybody else. And, you know, it's been an issue year after year, and I know it's one of our priorities, and I know Dr. McDay wanted yours to, to, to address. And, and you don't have to answer it now, but you know, strategies to address this are, are, are important to the board, I know, and to the community. And, and we, you know, that's just, just a priority I'd like the public to know that, that is something this board is highly concerned over. And that includes our also lagging graduation rate in that same population.
So, Dr. Latif, that's a great call out because that is an important piece of data that we see and a huge gap. One of the ways that we're working this, this year to really address that is, is monthly parent engagement sessions where we are really working hard to educate the parents of our English learners, ensuring that we have appropriate interpreters there so that they truly understand the opportunities, including the impacts or the doors that this, this type of testing like the SAT can open for their students. And so, you know, there are a number of pieces, but one of those is really trying to reengage families in that way, especially the families of our English learners. There are certainly other ways that I think you, you will be seeing more about in the strategic plan where we are addressing, really closing those, those opportunity gaps and those gaps of students' testing, taking the SAT or the ACT.
And I would just add that we honestly don't really know the why. And so we have to conduct a thorough root cause analysis to determine why, you know, are some of our students with higher dropout rates, why is that happening? And what we can do both within the school division, but as I stated earlier, looking at what's happening that requires social services beyond what we can offer and then connecting families to those services. So it's going to be a process for us to look at not just data, but qualitative data in terms of surveying our families, talking to our families, engaging with them, using our parent liaisons to help get at the why this is happening. And then once we can, you know, say with confidence, we have identified some problems of practice, then align strategies to that. But we really cannot tell you with full confidence that we, we know exactly why this phenomenon is happening.
Well, I, I think that's great because I think that'll help us maybe improve this, right, obviously. I had, well, I had, I had Ms. Zargarpur, then I had Wall, and then I'll go, you have one? You didn't? Oh, I'm sorry. Who was it? Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to piggyback on, on that and, and say that I, I think it also may be helpful too, if we could look at the breakdown of that population of, in specifics to, specifically to which portion of those students who identify or families identify as Hispanic who are also students who are EL learners and who are not. Because I think that a lot of times we make assumptions that the majority of those students are EL learners because of being Hispanic. Now, I know at my high school at Freedom, a lar, we have like one of the largest population of EL students who also happen to be Hispanic. But I think it would be helpful for our public watching to know if that's countywide, or is it pockets, or, you know, really what that looks like in, in a bigger picture, so that we can also try to break down some of those assumptions from the general public coming in too. And I think that'd be helpful too, like when we look at graduation data, if you could also speak to that. Because I know like my high school does impact on-time graduation rate. Because we have so many EL students, it often looks negatively when you look at the data. And it says the graduation rate for this particular school is 88%. And a high school right next to it is 99%. I'm making up numbers, right? But it may be because that particular school has a significant more amount of EL learners or special education students who take longer to graduate, or whatever the reason. But I think that as we continue the school year and we continue our growth in the ways that we look at data, those type of points I think would be very helpful too. Because I do get a lot of comments, not necessarily here, but like racial and social justice who say, well, your high school isn't graduating students on time. Look at the number. But there's nothing in that number, or there's nothing in that data point that would say, well, this high school also has the most English as a second language learner student, and that impacts the graduation rate because maybe they're all level ones, or maybe all level four. We don't know. So I think as we come back and revisit these subjects, that type of extra definitions to those numbers are very helpful. So thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Ms. Wall and then Ms. Jessie.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to be brief, but I just wanted to say first of all, thank you for this report because I know it represents hours and hours of work to put all this data together and all these, you know, slides alone. But besides all the work that went into getting the slides in the first place, really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And I appreciate the chance to look through the slides beforehand and really kind of digest the numbers. And, and that helped answer a lot of my questions, of course, raised some others, but you know, we've talked about those. My, my question is simple. We have 3% or so of our student body learning in kind of a totally different method, you know, with proximity or, you know, online, virtual, not totally different, but you know, quite different. Going forward, I would just ask, are we going to be tracking those cohorts separately and just kind of see like, you know, this, because the, this data is how, this is what we're getting from this group, or this data is what we're getting from this group, or are we going to kind of be combining it? Or how are we going to use those, use, use the best practices and the results of what we've found to, to guide future decisions in the virtual and the in-person space?
So in order to address your question about the data, we absolutely have flags for the students who are learning virtually. And as was the case last year, tracking some things in terms of performance and things along the way can be done that way. The numbers, of course, per school and everything are much smaller this year, but that certainly can be done. In addition, for schools as a resource in, an on-track report that they have access to, the information, that's, that's available there also. Not that it's a risk factor, but it's something for folks to be aware of in terms of differentiated responses. But we definitely, in terms of from a data analysis perspective, will be looking at that for all the reasons you mentioned.
Ms. Jessie.
Thank you. You know, we talk about the gap being the performance and opportunity gap. During my years of work and, and doing some traveling throughout the United States and looking at the research, there is a gap between performance and potential. And I, I think that as we're talking about the potential of these kids and high expectations, we know that there are school systems throughout the United States, Chicago's school system being one, where people have closed the gap. So I'm wondering, are we looking at traveling to some of those sites and looking at sites where there has been a close in the gap? And then the second item is SAT reduction and SAT and ACT, that have we looked at the impact of test optional? Because a lot of universities are not requiring SAT information, I mean, requirements. And I've had parents call me because they, the child wanted to go, the student wanted to be test optional, but the school insisted on putting his, his actual SAT scores on the application. And that's just a rule in the school. So I guess it's just two questions. The other one is more thought. For me, it's always been about potential, that these kids have potential. Special ed, I'm still very concerned about special ed because it was a pre, pre, before the pandemic, we had problems there. So if you could address a couple of those items, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
So, Mrs. Jessie, I, I can speak to the SAT participation a little bit. You asked a good question about the impact of test optional. I think it's going to be a little while before we can really see the full impact of that. And it was definitely confounded with the pandemic, but more and more schools have that. In terms of test optional, a lot of the students are still, still take the SAT, whether they submit them to the schools is another question. But I think we'll be looking at that. That's, that's a big question. You can see trends going down. I think that's one of the reasons why ACT in particular, those numbers are dropping nationwide because of test optional. But in terms of the impacts here, the data we have so far probably don't show a full impact of that because those decisions have been on, you know, coming in the last few years. And there's a lag with that as well because many of our students take those tests as, as juniors. And so that's the question I can, I feel like I can address.
I think some of my concerns are that some parents are, and students are indicating that they don't know about test, test optional. I guess just making the high schools make, make students more aware of what test optional really means and the ramifications. Thank you.
Okay. I think that wraps. So just as a reminder, because Ms. Jessie brought up, and we are in college admissions season, students have to, and I think this, the county should send out a reminder, if, if we could, that the students have to opt out of having their ACT and SAT on the transcript. It's an opt-out because it's automatically on. And, and I think it's important to remind our counselors and our principals and our students because it's an easy thing to forget. And then if they don't opt out, it's on there. And if they're applying to a test optional school and they don't want to submit it, they don't, they might not submit the scores, but it shows up on the transcript. And once you see it, it's like opening Pandora's box. And so I would really encourage the school division to remind the students, you got to opt out on that if you, because it's automatic on the transcript. And I'm, I'm not sure if that's the right thing we ought to be doing. And I don't know. I think it's a state law that they're, they're told us to put that on there, but something you may want to look into, Dr. McDay. But just as a reminder to everybody, that goes on there automatically. All right, folks, I think, I think the board's been here. We'll recess for 15 and come back to finish up the rest of the meeting. Thanks. Okay, folks, everyone can grab their seats. We're going to restart and we'll move on to 1701, the 9/11 Commission update. This is on for a presentation or information. And I'm not sure who's presenting this. Dr. McDay?
Yeah. Ms. Goss, are you prepared?
Yes. Good evening again. Tonight, we are, we were asked by Mrs. Wall and Mr. Wilk to present about the work of our 9/11 commemoration committee. Mr. Gervin, the supervisor for history and social science, was the facilitator of this committee and the work. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Gervin to come forward and present the outcomes of this committee's efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. Good evening, Dr. Latif, board members, Dr. McDay. So the 9/11 Commission, just want to make sure, commemorative committee, well, it consisted of 29 individuals. Majority of those were Prince William County school teachers. And then there was several that were recommended board appointees. You can see those names on there. We had, you know, teachers from, you know, high schools, middle schools and elementary schools and a teaching, a teacher assistant. And also Laura Shaw, who is the teacher-in-residence at the Marine Corps Museum, was on that commission, on that committee as well and worked very, you know, very well with, with all, all the grade level bands that we set that into. So quickly, just going over the timeline, basically last September, you know, Mr. Wilk had, had put forward the, you know, the, you know, he had requested that we form this committee to create some resources and student learning experiences that commemorate the, what was, you know, just, you know, a few weeks ago, the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks. And we basically decided really to wait till springtime to get them together because of, you know, it was, as you all know, last year was an interesting school year and the, and the schools were just coming back, teachers were just coming back. And so we found that to be an ideal time to get volunteers and so forth. And we had, as you can see, we had an overwhelming response of teachers who were really excited about joining the committee and working on those resources. And same with the board appointees, they were excited. They brought a wealth of knowledge to that, to that committee work as well. And we basically had them set up in the grade level bands that, that worked in these different areas. So the K2, basically, we tried to have that focus basically be on everyday heroes. And third through fifth grade worked on Patriot Day, was sort of their, their overall theme. That was not something that we told the committee that they had, had to do. Basically, they had a right to, to have some freedom to come up with their own ideas and things. But those were the sort of the areas that we wanted them to focus on. And then six, middle school, sixth through eighth grade, really was looking at, you know, how do tragic events affect communities? That was their main focus. And then high school level was really looking at that lessons learned from the post-9/11 generation, which they all are, right? Because every one of the students, you know, in our schools right now were born after those events. And, you know, it was just interesting trying to, you know, meeting with, with, with these individuals first, talking about, you know, their experiences themselves. Unfortunately, you know, in, in the 20th century and beginning of the 21st century, for Americans, we all have those sort of remember where you were moments. 9/11 was for, for my generation. My parents would have been the Kennedy assassination and my grandparents, the attack on Pearl Harbor. So it's like those moments that you can remember exactly where you were when you found out. The kids, obviously, right, do not have that memory. And so it was, you know, that was basically, you know, something, you know, emphasis behind, you know, a lot of the excitement with the teachers getting to work and make sure that the students really had a good understanding of the past events. So the committee, the commemoration committee got together and, you know, after several meetings that I, that I spearheaded, but really I was trying to let the teachers and the committee members be, you know, the emphasis of the, of the work and that they were able to, to go off on their own. They, they formed their groups by grade levels and then they, they did the work. That, you know, they periodically would meet, they would check in with me, they'd let me know where they were, they, you know, let me know if they had questions and things. And got their work done by the, by June 30th is when we were looking at the, trying to have that, that be done. And we got those things, we collected from all, from all the individuals. And we had to add, you know, just do some editing so it would fit well with the modules. And we put them and posted them on, in the Prince William County Canvas Commons so that all teachers could access those modules. So these are just, and you have in the slide presentation, I was not going to read everything, but these are the, some, just some of the examples of some of the resources and student learning experiences that the teachers and committee members worked on. And in the back of the, of the report that I sent as well, in the slide deck, it is, you know, I'm just going to go to it earlier, but, you know, the feedback we got, especially from the elementary schools, was that the, the teachers and the committee members that created these resources, you know, you gathered these resources and created these student learning experiences, really focused on creating, you know, letting the kids be creative and really letting them collaborate together. And as you can see, some of the examples up there, the students really got into that. They were excited about the, the work they They were excited about the, the work they were doing. And it's a solemn occasion to remember. And so obviously, the teachers talked about that. But, you know, you, you obviously have to work with the cognitive level of the student. You're not very well going to show, you know, a kindergarten student some of the, the footage on that day. It's not probably, you know, definitely not appropriate. So, but getting them to understand what everyday heroes are, the frontline workers, and who they felt were heroes. And a lot of students, you know, their mom and, mother and father are heroes, local policemen, firemen, and so forth. So they did a wonderful job. And again, the teachers that use these resources were excited again because the students really got engaged in creating these things. So for middle school, basically, they, you know, this, this went over a few days. Now, they did the same, basically, the, the same recent, student learning experiences were set for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but they, they ratcheted up basically in sophistication, depending on the grade level. And they really got into, you know, how the community reacts to these tragic events. Even though we are, you know, here in Virginia, many of you know, we had, we lost individuals in Prince William County because we had first responders that, you know, you know, rushed to the scenes and so forth. And so were involved in the, in the tragedy, you know, sadly. So, you know, I know when I, when I first started teaching in the, in the school district, I, we had, I had several students in my class who had lost parents at 9/11. So it was something that touched this community as well. And so the middle, so the middle school, that was their focus. And again, the feedback there was, was that the students, even though they've had some of this information, it's in some of our standards, they, they were not really aware of the overall events. And so doing these, doing these exercises really helped them understand it a lot better and get, get more engaged. Again, some more of the middle school experiences. So for civics, eighth grade, now, they got more into the government and the government's response to the 9/11 tragedy. And, you know, how did our government change after that date? And, you know, are we still having some of those, you know, some of those effects even today? So that was their focus really there. And then high school looked at it a little differently. They, they had several different ways of doing it. They, they, the teachers created student learning experiences that got right into the historical part of 9/11. And, you know, again, you can see some of the anecdotal feedback, you know, some of the teachers that did some of the video, the video student learning experiences we had. Getting to see it happen, you know, that was really some of the main thing was, you know, ticking it over time to see, you know, videos of Brian Gumbel, for instance, you know, trying to figure out what's going on here in New York, to Tony Blair talking, and then George Bush, and so on. And, and some of the, from several teachers, the anecdotal feedback was when they saw the actual footage of the plane saying that it hitting the Twin Towers, it was, you know, very impactful for the students. Even though they knew, they even told their teachers, like, we knew what had happened, but it was just seeing it again in that context. And, and especially being, you know, 20 years, you know, 20 years later, it was very impactful for those teachers. So, and then we also had, some of the teachers also, and some of the committee members also created lessons and, and learning experiences that looked at, you know, east-west relations over time, over history. So some of the things that they created and, and we have in the Canvas, they have not yet got to because they, they come later on during their curriculum where it fits in. So they will have access, obviously, to those. But that's when they'll prob, most likely, that's when teachers are telling us, that's when they would implement those, when they fit into the standards of learning. Those are the high school experiences continued. And then last part, just wanted to mention, we have a great partnership with the National Museum of the Marine Corps. And they really worked, the teacher-in-residence position is, is really one of the outstanding position that we have, that we can have a full-time teacher paid by the, by the Marine Corps Museum to really help engage our students and our teachers with, with, with our past. And so they got involved, their whole education staff was involved in this, and they created several of the student resources, student learning experiences. And they, they offered on that day itself, they offered some live chatting. And then we also put in those, in the Canvas modules, the, the 9/11 memorial itself did things on that day that we made sure our teachers were aware of. There was live streaming going on, there was a 35-minute video that they could watch, and it lasted all day. So school teachers could have their kids join at any time during the day to, to engage in the chat, in the live sessions that were going on with the memorial. Yeah, that's right there. And again, there's the feedback that I was mentioning. And that's the end of the presentation.
Wonderful presentation, Mr. Gervin. Thank you so much for doing this. Comments? Mr. Wilk, Ms. Wall? Mr. Wilk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gervin. Thank you, collective team. Uh, yeah, I mean, when I first conceived this, I think everything kind of came into place exactly. And I know Dr. McDavid's team kind of inherited this from decisions that were made from the previous, that were kind of put on the previous administration. But I appreciate, Mr. Gervin, your team's collective follow-through. From my discussion with the gentleman I appointed in my district, who actually was on his way to the Pentagon the day of the attacks, I thought he was a natural fit for it, who had lost colleagues in the horrific attacks that killed 3,000 people. Um, you know, his feedback was, this is a great opportunity, a great learning experience. And I think you hit, hit it on the head right at the start there, Mr. Gervin, about, you know, memory and the importance of, you know, remembering events that have occurred. You know, you brought up, you know, Pearl Harbor's the famous example. And I read a couple of good articles, one was in like the Pittsburgh Gazette about the importance of memory and it, how that memory becomes kind of part of the distant past and it becomes an event and a date and something, you know, is a little excerpt in a book that kids in other generations forward. And so as we go from Pearl Harbor, we go to civil rights, then we go to Vietnam, and all these different events keep on piling up. And so for my generation, millennials, and being a senior in high school when this event occurred, it was definitely something, and I think the whole board will attest to that, it, it definitely had an impact on everyone's lives. Everyone remembers where we were on 9/11, what we were doing and what occurred, even while I was in Michigan, not as close, you know, where the Pentagon was attacked right down the road here. So I'm really appreciative of the work that has been done, the committee engagement. You know, I, I will say, as the timeline shows, we were way ahead of anyone else. We started this implementation a year in advance, well before the VDOE had someone speak a month before the event about what they think, you know, should be taught and stuff like that. We were set, our modules were up, and we were ready to go. And, and I'm proud of the work the team did to get that up and running and be prepared for this. My ask, I think, would be in the future is, I mean, we keep those modules, you know, potentially refreshed. 9/11 can always be taught, of course, in, you know, and 20 years is commemorative anniversary, of course, but as we, 21, 22, and so on. I, I think just again, given the impact that it's had on everyone's lives, I think it's still something to be addressed. And I love the fact that we have those modules there and teachers and anyone who still wants to go in and potentially update those and make more or put more resources, just like on television. Every year, there's some new interesting documentary about 9/11 that's, you know, released. And as we learn more and more information. So again, thank you to your team. Thank you to all the members who served, the teachers, the appointees. Thank you, Dr. McDavid, for carrying it through and the collective group. I'm very, I'm very happy and supportive of what was completed, so thank you.
Ms. Wall?
I also want to thank you, Mr. Gervin, and the committee members, all those teachers and professionals and volunteers who we nominated from the community, who spent a lot of time. I know it represents a lot of hours of work and extra, extra work, and, you know, they serve as a volunteer on these kinds of committees. So it is, it is a sacrifice, but it's very important, and I really want to thank everybody. I'm glad that we have this. And the great thing about having Canvas is that we have a way to memorialize it and kind of preserve it and, and use it in years to come. And so I, I echo Mr. Wilk's comments about, you know, hopefully we'll be, we will, we will use it and that we will refresh it as needed, but that it's there now. And that's really exciting. I think that's, that's really great. And it looks like we had a lot of thoughtful approach for the different developmentally appropriate activities from the very small, small children all the way up to the, you know, the high school seniors who could obviously handle it in a very different way. I, I wanted to come, just praise the idea of the live streaming into the classrooms and collaborating with the Marine Corps Museum. That's a great resource that we have here in this community where we live. We have so many resources like that. I love to see that kind of partnership between the schools and our, and our community and the, in this case, the, the museum. So I really hope that we continue to look for opportunities like that. I think that's fantastic, it's brilliant. I was able to attend a discussion at the Marine Corps Museum with people who survived, who were there, eyewitness accounts, and it was powerful. It's so powerful, you know, I, I mean, I remember 9/11, I remember where I was, everybody, you know, we all do. But it was powerful to listen to somebody reflect upon a life-changing experience of their own, and it created a lot of empathy in the room among everybody who was listening, who didn't have that same experience, but who, who could empathize. And, and it brought the level of compassion and understanding to a very human level. And I think allowing, you know, our students to have those kinds of experiences when they're ready, you know, our older students, can really help bring us together and understand, you know, understand each other. So I just want to say thank you one more time to the committee for all of your work. If anybody's listening or watching this, we really do appreciate it. When we made that call and asked you to volunteer and you said yes, that means a lot. So thank you.
Okay. I, I will just echo their comments. Mr. Gervin, getting 20-plus people on a committee to work together and the end product is this is fantastic. This is, as Ms. Wall says, exists for perpetuity now, and that's fantastic, and it's a great resource for our students. I want to specifically thank my appointee, Dr. Ernie Porta. He said that the committee members all worked very well together, put together this effort really in a quick, short timeframe, and this is high-quality, really high-quality curriculum, and it's, it's really good stuff. And I want to thank Justin, Justin Wilk, member from the Potomac District for, District for recommending that we do this, and the administration for supporting this effort. And your department always does a terrific job with social studies and, and history. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on next, 1702, revision of Policy 738, a motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the proposed revision of Policy 738, nondiscrimination and harassment of students.
Do I have a second for that motion? Ms. Williams?
I'd like to second.
Ms. Williams seconds the motion. The floor is open for discussion. Any discussion? Anybody have any comments? Ms. Wall?
I have a couple of questions. My, my first question is, I've been looking over our other nondiscrimination policy, which is 060, which is overarching and covers, is very broad, and it covers much of the same territory as the proposed changes in 738. So I was wondering if we could have somebody speak to why this is a separate nondiscrimination provision, why we need this provision, or what was the rationale for having a, a separate one? And as opposed to having the 060, which is broad and fundamental? I think, yeah, I'll just wait.
Carol, you, you might want to expound on this, but ideally is to bring us in compliance with the law. But Carol, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
It is to bring us into compliance with state law, specifically the Virginia Human Rights Act. But more specifically to your question about having the foundational nondiscrimination policy 060, is that the way that our regulations and policies are set up is that although we have an overall nondiscrimination policy, we translate that into a policy as it pertains to employees, and then we have a parallel policy for students. And then those policies are, are, are the, the starting point for us to implement regulations to carry out those, those practices for those particular populations.
Ms. Wall?
So, thank you. I know that the typical order of things is, is that policy usually comes first and, and then over time, regulations are formulated and implemented. And so I have received the question from the community a, a number of times, asking about the timing of the regulations that, that go along with this policy. And it seems that here we had some regulations first and then policy second. And the public was asking, can, can we speak to that, why that was? Was there some particular circumstances why it needed to be that way?
I'm going to have Ms. Heebner speak to what was in place prior. And then the regulations that we're revising now are in alignment with the policy that may be adopted this evening. So if you could speak to Ms. Heebner, what was in place before as it relates to regulation?
Certainly. So Policy 738 has regulations that fall underneath it. Policy 738-5 was added, and that was done to be in compliance. The 738 regulation also speaks to our Title IX processes, which you're all familiar with, the changes that have come about recently under the DeVos guidance that we've received. And we went over through a comprehensive review of revising all of our regulations. So in order to do so in a timely way, to be in compliance with the coming school year, allowing for registration under the changes that have occurred, protections for certain classes, including our transgender students, we did develop a new policy, 738-5, in order to make sure that as we registered students in, in preparation for the coming year, that we had that in place. But the policy itself was not ready to be updated yet because we were bringing forward an entire series that had all of our Title IX discrimination, students with disabilities, sexual harassment, and all that's captured in that policy and regulations.
Yeah. So a follow-up question then would be, since, you know, because of this unique circumstance with Title IX and, you know, the whole package of updates that needed to happen, regulations kind of, kind of came first. So can you speak then to how parents could inform that regulatory process? Because usually, you know, it would work out that parents would, and citizens would weigh in on the policy, but here we, maybe they would be interested in informing the regulatory process. Maybe there's something that we could share with parents for how that might go, look going forward, you know, in, in an effort for, you know, improved transparency and communication with engagement, community engagement?
Certainly.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to, you know, speak to the fact that regulation is designed to carry out policy once it's adopted. And so when we have, you know, feedback and weigh in on policy, we, parents, of course, can and we have gotten feedback via the superintendent's account where families have weighed in, teachers have weighed in around our regulations. But keeping in mind that the regulations do have to fulfill the execution of the policy. If you want to expand on that, Denise?
Dr. McDavid is exactly right. And so we do often receive feedback from parents. And, you know, through multiple avenues, we do have, we're always welcome and open to input from constituents if they'd like to give feedback. We do meet with our schools, our stakeholders, and we, and the process of developing our policies. We did have a comprehensive focus group, which our school personnel did contribute, and they did provide us feedback from their school communities, including their parent advisory councils and parents and, and staff members as well.
One more question. Sorry, I have one more question that builds upon that. So, so looking forward, can you tell me what we're going to do to evaluate our own processes within the division, you know, as we seek to ensure the safety of every student? Can you speak to maybe what that looks like? I, I guess it would be the regulatory review process, like how often would a, a regulation be reviewed? And is a committee formed? Those kinds of questions, I've also received some questions along those lines of how that process works. I think, I guess the question would be too, let's say we have a set of policies, and then we have a set of fact patterns in the community that occur, and then we may realize, like, wait a second, this, this policy or this regulation doesn't seem to really be meeting the right, or hitting all the right notes. You know, we need, we maybe need to adjust this. So is there a regulatory review process? And how can it, parents, or I guess the public, have any insight into that regulatory review process?
So you'll see on the top of all of our policies and our regulations, they are up for regular review, usually a five-year period. There are certain times when regulations need to be updated, just to be in alignment with state code and expectations. I would encourage parents, you know, to use a number of different avenues to provide feedback and input.
feedback and input. If so, for example, there, I mentioned your school advisory councils, the parent advisory councils at your school level. We always have a division survey, which is an option. We do look and look at that information and make changes accordingly. We do track data, and we have a lot of focus groups with our schools where we receive feedback. But as far as the, the schedule, it's a set schedule, but it is also, it varies by need just based on the, the requirements from the code, and in response to things that we'd see in data in our schools when there is a need for change.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody? Ms. Williams? I'm sorry. Justin, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think a lot of stuff is being kind of alluded to about Title IX and state law, federal law, so, and, and this actually is interesting because when Inside Nova posted something that I thought was originally clickbait, it noticed it was casually buried in the article, the ruling that came from the Grimm decision, which impacts everything and the law of what we were doing here. And after speaking to the reporter, he's like, you know, I should move that up because it is kind of a critical piece of this whole thing that's happening here. So I want to bring everyone to light, and just for the public's understanding of kind of what we're talking about in regards to the federal law here. We talked about the state, right? So we've mentioned Title IX, and that is the Education Amendment of 1972, which prohibits discrimination based on sex in educational programs and activities that receive financial assistance from the federal government. Congress left this enforcement of this to the executive branch, which by 1980 fell under the Office for Civil Rights within the Department of Education. So Gavin Grimm sued his school board for excluding him from the restrooms that other male students were allowed to do in Gloucester County, a rural county in Virginia. So this case goes and begins in 2015. Now, there's a lot of case law with this, there's a lot of appeals process, and when I taught eighth grade civics, we learned about the appeals process at a baseline level for both the state and federal. But I'll say it like this and summarize this: Other than the initial ruling in the federal district court, every other higher court supported Grimm in this decision, in this ruling of his protection under Title IX and the equal protection of law. In fact, when this case appeared all the way, was appealed all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court in 2017, the court ruled under the guidance from the Department of Ed that the case would be returned to the lower court and be retried with the new interpretation of the Title IX protection. So if you jump forward back to that district court now to 2019, the federal district court's judge, Arinda M. Wright Allen, ruled in favor of Grimm, saying, "There is no question that the board's policy discriminates against transgender students based on their gender nonconformity." The court concludes that the board has discriminated against Gavin Grimm based on his transgender status in the violation of Title IX. In June of this past year, the Supreme Court declined to review the lower court's decision, which was an appeal by Gloucester, that the board's discriminatory restroom policy for transgender students violated Title IX and the Constitution. The board informed the community back in June that it would pay the entire amount requested in the fee for petition, so the entire court fees for Grimm, $1.3 million, out of a school system of 5,000 students, of an operating budget of $129 million, and that's just one transgender case of a school system of that size. In summary, a conservative majority on the U.S. Supreme Court allowed the appeals court in support of transgender students to stand. The U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit, have both ruled that the school board in Gloucester violated Title IX and the equal protection clause by prohibiting Grimm from using the same restrooms as other boys and forcing him to use separate restrooms. What we are doing is alignment with the law. Failure to adopt these policies and regulations put our school system in peril should we not protect our transgender students. In summary, Gloucester County schools denied the basic dignity and support of one of its students and ultimately did not follow the law in protecting their students. Every student matters. I will not follow the illegal steps of Gloucester and deny students their legal protections under both the U.S. and the Commonwealth of Virginia Constitution. We are simply following the law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to just say, I appreciate that we are having this discussion and that we are taking this vote tonight, simply as a board member who has knew these policies and, and focused the state was taking for over two years now, and as a long-term board member who was here and proudly voted in favor of the update we did in 2017, for our staff and the adults in our school division, and how warmly and welcome that update was received in 2017 from our employees. I want to say that, you know, when I joined the board, I used to often say that I was here to be a voice for the voiceless. And what I have learned is that there is not a voiceless community, there are those who are unheard and unseen. And that's really what it comes down to with the adoption of the model guidance policies included in this nondiscrimination policy. Because I think there's been a lot of emphasis on just transgender students and not recognition that there's more to this policy than just our transgender students, although it doesn't make them any less, and it is extremely important to this group of individuals who have the highest suicide rate amongst almost all of our student body. And I want to be perfectly clear that every individual has a right to their own belief, but that doesn't mean it gets, you get to cancel out someone else's belief or someone else's reality. And I think that that has been a point of contention when we talk about transgender students in schools. And I just want to be very clear in saying that I particularly am very proud, and I want to take a moment and just pause and say, for those who don't know, we have, we had a Prince William County student serve at the state level to help develop these model guidelines and policies because of the experience that she had in schools, in our own school system, and has continued to grow and serve our community. And I want to make a special point to acknowledge Ms. Ollie Campa for all of the work that she has done and all the work that her family has done on these model policies, and for educating not only myself, but anyone willing to listen to them, on their experience. Because we don't often take the time to learn about someone else's experience before we criticize it or pass judgment. Everyone is guilty of that, myself included. I just happen to be a person who was exposed and had the time, and thank goodness, the allowance to be included in those discussions years and years ago, where a lot of people, this is just a new topic, and it's very scary to a lot of individuals. But what we do here in Prince William County Schools is ensure the safety of all of our students, and that means all of them. Having transgender students in our school division is not new. It's not going to suddenly go away, and I personally am never going to shy for being an advocate and ally, ally for these students, because it is my belief that we should provide a safe and learning environment for all of our students. And it saddens me sometimes when I hear transgender students being related to acts of violence, because acts of violence go across any demographic group. Doesn't matter whether you're transgender, straight, gay, black, white, purple, green, handicapped, not. If you're going to commit a crime, individuals are not concerned about what policies, what laws, because that's what makes it a crime, right? We have these policies in existence, and you go against them, or you go against laws. It's not specific to any one group. I also want to make a point to say that there is a difference, right, between, it's been brought up several times, Loudoun Counties and Prince William County Schools, in how we handle issues of violence and how we treat our students, and what we have in our disciplinary policies, our alternative schools, the way that we deal with students. I think that this is something that is not lost on those of us here in Prince William County Schools, and I think it's important to bring attention, because often when you talk about transgender students, you hear about that. And there's no message to counter, there's no statement that says that we're different. And that's really important, because you have a lot of parents who've only heard that and don't hear about what we do. And I think it's important to, as parents and any individual care for a student, to go back and really reread through our code of behavior, ask those questions to the staff and administrators if you have concerns. I think that's really important. And the last thing I just want to say is that, you know, Justin brought up the federal portion of it, but in case anyone would like for reference, the Department of Education has an entire webpage dedicated to this, but it is Virginia Code 22.1-23.3 that speaks specifically to our transgender, our alignment with the treat, model policies for the treatment of transgender students in public and secondary schools. But again, I want to remind everyone that this policy is not just about that. There are many updates that deserve just as much of the time and attention as those for our transgender students. So, thank you.
And Ms. Jessie.
I'm not sure I want to talk that much about the law, but I want to talk about the voice for the voiceless. When I came on this board, I had this little phrase, "A voice for the voiceless," not realizing that I would be put in a position where I really did have to address that. I am from South Carolina. I grew up in a school system that Brown versus Brown was 1954, but by, it was a non-story in my community because nothing changed. I still went to the same school that was across the street from a white school that I could not, I could have walked across the street. I still was not allowed to ride the bus that came by my house. But as I was being discriminated against, I grew up in an environment where we made fun of people who did not, we thought were different. And so it's been a growth process for me. And the thing that happened when we put this item on the agenda the last time, something happened that I hadn't anticipated, and that was for some reason, employees in this school system came to me and told me their stories. And one was a horrendous story, and I said to the individual, "Do you want me to use your name?" And the person said, "Yes," because terrible things happened to him, and I've also had the opportunity to work with a, a teacher in my school that had some situations, just trying to find a position in the county. And I hired this individual, and turned out one of the best teachers I've ever taught, had in my school. So I come to this saying, yes, I support the policy, and for those who have different opinions, I understand, because I was there. I had different opinions. I didn't just walk, say, oh, I just, you know, and so I just want people to know that I support it and why I support it, but I also understand that this is a growth issue for many people. Thank you.
Ms. Wall.
So I think here in Prince William County Schools, we have had a broad foundational nondiscrimination stance and policy already in place, and I think it's working well for our schools, and we're already in compliance. And, you know, we do a lot of good work here in promoting belonging and fairness and kindness for all, and we make sure every student, single student is treated fairly and that we're meeting their individual educational and, and safety needs. I think we've done a good job at striking that balance as best as can be made with, you know, a completely big school division like this. My constituents, however, have expressed concerns to me about how the process unfolded. They felt shut out of the process to some extent, felt their ability to speak to the changes, because we, we have done a lot of this by regulation rather than policy, there's been little insight or, or oversight by the public into how the changes have been implemented. And, you know, I bring to the board a unique perspective because of my legal training. I understand a lot of the legal things that have been happening, and I see where the law is headed. I also see that a number of people in segments of society are uncomfortable with that direction, understandably. And in that context, as with any policy, I think it is an action like what we're doing tonight warrants further refinement, especially with regard to implementation. And so, you know, on that basis, I am, I'm not supporting this motion, but I do wish to say that I think we do a good job in Prince William County Schools in welcoming all of our students into our school environment and finding a way for everybody to feel comfortable and able to access our educational programs, and I do hope that we, we continue to promote fairness for all.
Okay. Ms., oh, Ms. Jackson, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Deteef. I just want to just briefly say that the role of a board member is to create policy, and policy is where we show our commitment to a world-class education, but also, you know, it does safeguard us legally, it does align us to state in federal laws that the previous board members detailed, including the Virginia Code and the Virginia Human Rights Act. So I, I support this resolution as it aligns our policies with practices already in place, and it's best practice.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure that we're, the public is clear that this is also is bringing us into alignment with existing laws that we should comply with and that we just didn't, by not agreeing, not approving this, that would bring us out of compliance. So, thank you.
Dr. McDade.
And I, I just want to add on the implementation piece with the regulation. We also have to make sure that once we have policy, once it's in alignment with the law, that the way that we implement it, we don't get a choice to choose not to implement certain aspects of the policy. We have to make sure that we implement the full policy in totality and respect what's in the policy and the way that it's executed within the school division.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll do this. The, um, getting on this board, I found it remarkable what board members do, and it is, one of the, one of the surprising things school board members have to do is they get constantly informed of situations that happen in school, whether they're violent, whether they're accidents, whether they're Title IX violations. In an organization as large as ours with 91,000 stu, 90,000 students, 15,000 employees, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a regular occurrence of concerns and issues that come up that, that seem to require the attention of the board constantly and the administration and legal counsel. And, you know, it's, it's, a lot of the work that we do involves protecting people, protecting employees, protecting students, and, you know, as you, as you see the emails that come across, the confidential updates, the concerns that we see, and, and, you know, this year has been a rough year. We've seen accidents, we've seen student deaths, we've seen adminis, you know, faculty, coaches, and, and concerns, and sicknesses, and so many different things. I, I have always found it remarkable the amount of work we have to do just constantly to make sure we're doing the best we can for our employees and our students, protecting everyone. The other thing that I find remarkable of being on this school board and sort of in public life, and especially over the last year or two, the idea that things are mutually exclusive, and, 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 you know, the idea that we pick one side, and that means we're against the other side. And I've, you know, and I, and I, I support this motion partly because, you know, the idea is that our job here and as a board, and I think this carries the same spirit, is that we're protecting everybody, and we're just re-emphasizing that, and we're coming into compliance with laws, you've heard already, I'm not going to go over all that, but, but it's not mutually exclusive, meaning, you know, Ms. Jessie brought up this point during the discussion on grades, you know, you know, we, we're seeing the slides on gifted students, we're seeing the slides on special ed students, we're seeing the slides on English learners, but we, we are caring about every single learner. It's every single learner on all those slides. And, and so, you know, Ms. Jessie has always pointed out, year after year, board meeting after meeting, we care about everyone, and, and she reiterated that today very eloquently. And then the idea that, you know, this comes into compliance with our desire to just, you know, comply with the law. And so I can tell that you, everyone in the public, and you see these cases that happen, and people get worried, you know, our job here is to protect everyone, and that's, that's what we do, and that's the, what Dr. McDade does, what this administration does. Our principals on a daily basis are faced with some incredible challenges, and, and they're not mutually exclusive. We are not protecting one group and not protecting another. We're not ensuring learning for one group and not ensuring learning for another. Our goals are to do everything we can. Is it easy? No. Is it a perfect world? You saw the good, bad, and ugly on our statistics, on our, on our academics, and we have a long way to go, but we always, we always knew that, we're working on that, and we're, you know, but it's the same way. So the idea that, you know, things are mutually exclusive, I think it's important for the public to understand is, you know, we can do everything, and we're trying to do everything, and the goal is to protect everyone. And so for that reason, I'll be supporting the motion, and it's also to come in compliance with the law. with the law. So this point, I'll ask the board members to please vote.
So the vote is six yes, Latif, Jackson, Jessie, Wilk, Williams, Zaragapour, one no, Wall, one absent, Ralston. Motion passed.
Moving on to board matters, we will start, I think, on Ms. Jessie's side tonight. Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. I don't have a great deal. I want to, I think I have a slide to put up tonight. Isn't this the cutest little girl you've ever seen? You know, I always felt that all the cute kids came to my school, but it looks like all the cute kids come to my district now. So this, this little girl is Adriana Porridge, and she attends John Jenkins Elementary, and she was featured in the Washington Post, and she's a first grader, believe it or not, and she wanted to talk about climate change. And she says she wants to be a scientist, invent a robot that sucks pollution out of the air. Her advice to adults, she said, her, her statement about adults is, "Adults, you just don't listen. They keep doing it and keeping, making the earth hotter." When she's, she was concerned about the wildfires in California, she added, "Everything will keep getting worse and worse until I grow up. Somebody has to do something." So thank you for sharing this with us tonight. And then I'd like to congratulate, we can take that slide down now, thank you. I'd like to congratulate Angela Lolo, Lilo, who joined our Special Ed Advisory Council for the Okaquan District. Thank you so much. She has a love for special ed and a passion, really, so I welcome her to the board. I finished most of my visits, my last visit was at Okaquan Elementary. You know how Okaquan is, it's called the Big O, and everything is big there. There were parents galore. And I had the awesome experience of riding in the homecoming parade with the queen, Dr. McDade, and the homecoming game. And it was a tribute to Mr. Moore, who was the coach who passed away there. His family was there, his mother, eight people from Alabama came to that game. We had a moment of silence and a candlelight visual. But I want to thank Dr. McDade for participating in that parade, and she knows how to throw candy. You did a good job. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start off by saying, again, I am especially grateful and thankful that we did have one of our, our very own PWSC students serve at the state level. That's an opportunity that most students don't have. And, and then to actually do that and undertake such a task, I think, is monumentous, and I'm extremely proud of this board for passing that and for all of Ms. Campus' hard work at the state level. And thank you for, for being a representative from Prince William County Schools. It's an honor just to have you in our school division. Next up, I think there's a picture that I, yep, look at me. So unfortunately, look at me, but our, my fellow school board member, Mr. Wilk, was out of town during Dumfries' annual Mayor's Ball, and I had the pleasure of attending. And I just want to give a special shout out to Ms. Bowles, who was recognized as Teacher of the Year at the event, and that is her in the middle with her principal from Dumfries Elementary, Ms. Star Granbri, Granby, sorry, excuse me. And she was just so overjoyed, and it was wonderful to see her get her recognition at the ball and publicly congratulated for all of the work that she does. And true to her teacher form, she had a teacher's speech written out for her thank yous. And it was just a wonderful, it was a wonderful occasion to see her, receive her recognition publicly. And you can take that down because I'm wearing a dress, that makes me uncomfortable. So I also wanted to give a special shout out to, I attended the Family Engagement Series virtually, that was held virtually as Families as Literary Partners on October 12th. I want to thank all of our staff who put that together, who, all of the many translators, because it was translated in more languages than I think I could count. Through all of that, the engagement seemed to be nonstop throughout the evening, and that was just amazing, and I look forward to attending more. Then I want to just note that there will be a Racial and Social Justice Commission, full commission meeting tomorrow at 6:30 at the McCourt Building for anyone who is interested. And last but not least, I just want to say that I know Pitcher Day is coming up, and I want to give special thanks to all of the elementary schools who are making accommodations for virtual students to come in, get their pictures, keeping all of our families, especially mine, feeling connected to the base school, and for making accommodations for those virtual students like I know my elementary school is. It is very much appreciated, and I know that's extra work for everybody. So thank you so much, and look forward to our next meeting.
Ms. Wall.
So in the last week, two middle school boys have been hit by cars in the Gainesville District. I'm glad to report that the first student is expected to make a full recovery. However, to the family of a young student and to his teachers and friends, and those who were there helping him in, yesterday, who was fatally injured on Route 15 near Graduation Drive, I offer my most sincere condolences at this most difficult time. It reminds me to be more watchful, especially in traffic, as I drive near our schools, and to be on the lookout for students, especially near crosswalks, buses, and parking lots. It's been a really busy time in the Gainesville District as far as happenings. We have wrapped up all of our back-to-school nights, and I was able to visit each of the remaining elementary schools, including Tyler, Mountain View, Graveley, Sinclair, and Mullen. And these schools are off to a great start. I was also able to attend some sporting events as well, including with Ms. Jackson, a tough, tough contest between Battlefield and Patriot Field Hockey Teams. Last Friday, Battlefield played Unity Reed in a Pink Out football game, and the whole community came, aided by scores of tiny pink dancers and cheerleaders, the dance team, the marching band, the JROTC, and a, and a new Bobcat mascot. Wow, I can't say that. It was an eighth grade band night as well, so middle schoolers from Bull Run and Reagan were there with the high schoolers in the stands, and they even got to take over while the band was preparing for halftime, which was really, really fun for them. Speaking of band, Battlefield marching Bobcats competed at JMU, and I want to congratulate drum major Katie Railsback, band director Mr. Michael Britcher, and color guard captain Katie Stevenson, and the entire group for their first place overall win there at JMU in their division. Congratulations. Bull Run held an outdoor PTO hosted Fall Festival and a football game against Unity Braxton, another Gainesville District school. The events were incredibly fun and well-attended, and even involved a rivalry kickball game between staff and students. And it was close. Students prevailed 19 to 18, with plenty of hilarity on the staff side of things, with costumes, some corny school spirit cheers, and really rusty kickball skills. I also want to highlight the return of the concert. I attended my first high school concert, orchestra concert since February of 2020, and it was amazing. Mr. Scully is working magic at Battlefield, and I'm looking forward to attending more concerts in the future, hopefully with my concert buddy, Ms. Zaragapour. I want to thank everyone who is working so diligently on our recovery efforts and re-engaging our students. I want to end by sharing my commitment to family and community engagement. Your voices matter, your opinions matter. Our parents are not domestic terrorists, but they are valuable partners. You have a fundamental right to direct the upbringing of your children, to teach, to guide, to protect them, and to work with us as partners. You are an important part of this team, and we're here to help you and to serve you and to serve your students. And I'm out of time. So thank you all, and have a good night.
Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I give my condolences to the Gainesville District. Tonight, we discussed many factors that help students learn. We discussed creating a safe environment, research-based instructional practices, the difficulty of doing research-based instructional practices during a pandemic, and using data to learn and grow. Another important factor to student success is the student-parent partnership. So I'm very thankful for the new parent liaison positions that I saw in the slideshow. Also, this month is Dyslexia Awareness Month. We use this month to reflect on our practices and opportunities for inclusion, as some statistics label the frequency of dyslexia as around 13%. Another factor in student success is student leadership. School leadership is linked to student success and teacher morale. This month is Principal's Month, Appreciation Month, and I'm very grateful to all Prince William County's administrators, including Brunswick's principals. I'm thankful for the time that principals have taken to show me around back-to-school nights, speaking to me at sporting events, and meeting with me during the last few weeks. Thank you, principals, for your unwavering leadership, dedication, and commitment to your community. I greatly appreciate everything you do. I was fortunate to attend many back-to-school nights, and also thank you to Grand Hook, Cedar Point, T. Claywood, Brooklyn Mills, and Chris Young for taking time to meet with me in addition to letting me attend your back-to-school night. Since the last meeting, I was fortunate to attend the homecoming game with Ms. Zaragapour at Unity Reed, and the field hockey game with Ms. Wall. It is my absolute privilege to visit the wonderful 19 schools in the Brunswick District. Thank you to those who came and spoke with us tonight, or those who emailed us. Thank you to the 9/11 Committee for your time. And as always, thank you, huge thank you to all Prince William County staff. Have a good night.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members and colleagues. Thank you again, Mr. Girvin and the team, for presenting about the 9/11 Committee tonight. Just briefly, I was able, like some of my other colleagues, to wrap up and attend a few more of the final back-to-school nights, Dumfries Elementary, Ashland Triangle, and Mary Williams. So that wraps up back-to-school night season. It's crazy, it like stretched from like September to like mid-October, but it was good. I like how, in a sense, that we were able to make more of them because they were, in a sense, spread out a little bit. Also was able, unfortunately, I did miss the Merrill Ball. I was officiating my brother's wedding, so, you know, whatever. But congratulations to Mrs. Bowles, and thank you, Ms. Williams, for being there to congratulate her. Also was able to attend last Friday Forest Park Football, where they had an upset victory over the Garfield Red Wolves to keep themselves playoff contentions alive. The following morning, I ran, and I did not die, in the Falcon Bruin Fun Runs. This was the first time I actually ran in it. And thanks to some good coaching from my running mate of the virtual school principal, Brett Hellman, I was able to get a trophy for third place for my age group, to which later, to which later my 60-year-old mother calls, and she's like, "Honey, I'm so proud of how athletic you are." I said, "Mom," it was a light group of people, but, um, so I was very excited for that. Good, thanks, Mom.
There were three people in that group, right?
And then later that day, major shout-out, the annual Autism Walk, which did not occur last year because of COVID-19, started back off again at Unity Reed later that day. Major shout-out to Andy and Chris Jacks, Andy's former principal of Ashland. He and his wife put this on this year, and it was a great event. I was able to walk with the Swans Creek team and do that event. Chairman Wheeler attended, that was great to see her as well. And then later that day, although this is not a Prince William County-sponsored event, but it does have a lot of Prince William kids in residence, I did attend the performance of the Pied Piper Fiddler on the Roof with a budding star, the young Latif, performing in the ensemble there. So that was a fun event and good performance. So thank you, everyone. Look forward to checking in in two weeks.
Ms. Zaragapour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got to finish up the, the past couple of weeks with some back-to-school nights. Of note, I want to talk just a moment about what's going on at Kyle Wilson Elementary. They decided to do a make and take kind of back-to-school night. And so what the principal was explaining to me is that they actually looked at the data of what was going on during the pandemic, which connects with what we were talking about tonight, and they looked at what they know they needed to work on with the kids. And when the parents came in, the teachers worked with the parents to show them games that would support learning in math and language arts, and that were grade-level, age-appropriate. And I thought that was just a really cool idea. It gave the, the kids something to do that was a little bit, you know, practice, but a little bit more fun, gave parents information about what their kids were looking for. And this is the kind of partnership we actually really have to have now with this pandemic. We're still a little bit in it, right? We still need to wear our masks, wash our hands, get vaccinated, keep a little bit of distance, right? We still need to do these things. But as we move forward, we want to take care of our kids. And look, they're our children. I mean, our, our professionals in education go into this because they really care about how kids learn and what their futures look like. And so we do, like Ms. Wall said, we want to partner with the parents and make sure that everybody is working for our, you know, making sure our kids have this amazing future. And to that, to that point, I went to the college fair at Colgan yesterday and got to see that there were some fabulously long lines for the, all these different colleges that came by. There was also representation from Community College Military. We also had Nova, and we also had our Grow Our Own from Prince William County. So they were looking at how they can get kids who are currently in our system to look at becoming teachers in the future. So that was a great conversation. I think, believe it's the 30th, we're having a, a recruitment fair for teachers. So if you are a, an adult who's got a degree, you can come on in and have people here take a look at it and see what you could possibly be licensed for, because, yes, we are still hiring. Colgan's Girls Field Hockey won their semifinal game, and they will be at the regional finals on Thursday at 6:00 PM. So go Sharks! Looking forward to that. And, oh, yeah, went to, went to homecoming with Ms. Jackson at Unity Reed, got to go to homecoming at Hilton and got to see them win. And I'm looking forward to seeing Colgan's homecoming this Friday. So I will see you all in two weeks. We already covered the masks, you're correct? We're good? We're good, Dr. Latif?
You have 20 seconds to repeat it.
I am good.
Repeat it, repeat it.
Okay, I repeat it. Look at me, look at me. Wash your hands or sanitize. Wear the mask, sparkles are great. Keep your distance, and if you can, get vaccinated.
Wonderful, thank you all. It's great to hear all these wonderful updates. Things that keep me up at night, staff shortages worry me, bus driver shortages, teacher shortage, TA shortages. These are real concerns moving forward and have an impact on how we address. The second worry I have is recovery, re-engagement, and acceleration. And so these are concerns that I'm confident Dr. McDade and her team are working on, but these, these are real worries for the community. And so if you have folks you know who want to work in our school system, please let them know. I worry about math. I worry about recovery in math for our students. It's extremely concerning to me. I worry about funding our schools for the next budget season and making sure we get the dollars we need to do the things we need to do. So that's very important, and I hope the community starts thinking about that as we move into our budget season and the kinds of support we're going to need. I worry about quarantines and loss of days of schools for our students because of them. So please follow Ms. Zaragapour's advice and help us limit, limit COVID. Positives, so many sports stories across our wonderful county of great students doing great jobs. Wonderful to see our students going to homecoming dances and homecoming games, and students and families are just thrilled to be back. I thank, I thank every family, PTO, principal who's invited me to attend an event, there's too many for me to say here, but I really appreciate coming out to the schools to see things happening, and, and just the excitement on the, the parents' faces, the students' faces, just to be back. They are all very happy, and it's fantastic to see that. You know, I, I, so I continue to be grateful for that. Number of great events, back-to-school events, touch-base events, book fairs, these are all great things to see on Facebook and Twitter, and everyone posting the great stuff of everyone being back. This is just so critical. So again, I really appreciate all of our teachers, all of our administrators working exceptionally hard to, to do the recovery, re-engagement, and acceleration. This is going to be hard work, and it's hard work for our faculty, it's hard work for our students, and it's really hard work for our families. And so, you know, I, I thank everyone. It's college admissions season, students, remember to reach out to your counselors, remember to opt out or opt in, you know, opt out on your transcripts for the SAT scores, very important if you're not going to want to submit them. You got to know that. Every year, we have students complaining to me that they didn't know they had to do that, and I'm here to tell you, let's just make sure we do that. So everyone have a- So everyone, have a wonderful night, and thank you, and meeting adjourned.